Okay, it's nine o'clock. I will call to order the meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission for June 13th, 2016. Roll call, we're all here, yay, and Commissioner Peterson is representing the county board. Approval of the May 23rd, 2016 minutes, did everybody get a chance to read those?
Would a move approval as published?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the May 23rd minutes as published. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approval of the agenda. We have, excuse me, a lot of items on the agenda today. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agenda, or are there changes to the agenda?
Staff requests a change to the agenda, move item 20 from the regular agenda to the first item on the regular agenda, so above item 18.
Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
So moved with the change suggested.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with moving item 20 to between items 17 and 18 as part of the regular agenda, not the consent agenda. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. The consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will, as always, make the final decision. PJ, would you read the consent items into the agenda, please?
Sure. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item number three, conditional use permit review 9922 for South Canyon Country Estates Homeowners Association to review a community recreational area in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 9922 with 12 conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review 9937 for Bob Young to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 9937 with 20 conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review 0523 for Glenn Lackner to review a cemetery with two burial plots in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends the extension of conditional use permit 0523 with three conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 0827 for Sataquist Family Ranch LDT Partners to review a single wide mobile home in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends the approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0827 with six conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review 0848 for Spring Creek Premier Property, Cody Shad, Patty Hall is the owner, to review accessory structures, a garage and pump house without a primary structure in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0848 with 10 conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review 0925 for Steve Holbart to review a ranch hands residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 0925. Number nine, conditional use permit review 1102 for Jeff Devaney to review an internally illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1102 with nine conditions. Item 10, conditional use permit review 1504 for Stradivale Vacation Homes LLC, Ken and Tori Tomovic is the agents, to review a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1504 with 15 conditions. Item 11, conditional use permit 1605 for Spring Creek Hideaway LLC, Brent and Pam Vernick to allow a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1605 with 16 conditions. Condition use, item 12, conditional use permit 1612 for TC Enterprise Incorporated, Todd Schultz is the agent to allow bicycle rentals, ATV rentals, and retail shop as a home occupation in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1612 to the June 27th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 13, conditional use permit 1613 for Dennis Hubbard to allow for caretaker's residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1613 with 10 conditions. Number 14, conditional use permit 1615 for Tom and Lynn Distler to allow recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary residence while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1615 with nine conditions. Number 15, layout plat 1608, William and Lila Cozel, Spurley Consulting is the agent to reconfigure the lot lines to create lots one, two, and three of Cozel subdivision. Staff recommends approval of layout plat 1608 with 11 conditions. Item 16, mining permit review 1601 for Western Construction, Tom Lean is the owner, to review a mining permit to excavate, extract, and process gravel. Staff recommends to continue the review of mining permit 1601 to the July 11th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 17, construction permit 1603, West River Electric Association to grade the site for construction of a new electrical substation. Staff recommends approval of conditional, of construction permit 1603 with eight conditions.
Thank you, PJ.
You're welcome.
Would staff like to remove any of these items for further discussion?
No, ma'am.
Would any planning commissioner like to remove any items for further discussion?
I just have a question about item 11.
I have one also about item 11, so let's pull that for discussion, please.
Okay, and I have questions about three, six, and seven.
Three, six, and seven. Okay. So our consent calendar is items three through 17 with the exceptions of three, six, seven, and 11. Would someone like to move approval of that agenda?
Move approval of the consent calendar with three, let me see, what was it? Three through 17 was three, six, seven, and 11, fold.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with items three, six, seven, and 11 removed for further consideration. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item three.
Good morning, Chitima Sabun, planner. Give me just a second. So Barb, perhaps you can just...
Yeah. This, this is part of a neighborhood, it's not going anywhere. I don't know why, again, it needs to be reviewed in one year. Why?
Because this is the review...
Yeah, I know the policy, you've got your, you know, one, three, and five, but sometimes it just isn't necessary.
Because the applicant planned to build a new swimming pool, that's why...
I can't hear you very well.
Because the applicant planned to build a new swimming pool, so we would like to make sure that we can, that the applicant meet all the conditions at one-year review.
Okay, and that pool will be built within this next year, then?
I'm not sure.
Oh, really?
Because the applicant didn't, he didn't say that when, when they're gonna finish. The applicant only submitted conceptual plan, conceptual master plan that's attached to the staff report. And he has so many lists in there.
Well, perhaps they could notify the staff when a change is going to occur, and that would be more sensible.
Per the policies that you referenced, if the applicant does not perform the work within one year, that part of the conditional use permit is automatically revoked. Therefore, staff is doing them a favor by reviewing and helping them stay on task. And if needed be, it can be continued per the applicant's request, because if the applicant forgets to ask for continuation, it's automatically revoked.
So this would be an automatic in-office, you wouldn't even have to go out there, review?
No, we'd probably go out there, staff's out in the field quite often, probably swing by.
I just see this as an expansion of work, and perhaps my colleagues don't agree with that, but it's okay.
Further comments?
Madam Chair, could I ask some questions?
Yes.
Laurie? Is this the first time that the recreational area has stuff going on in it?
No, actually, if you, the staff report goes into it quite extensively, it was only on complaint basis only since 99.
But there's...
And there were several changes that should have come to the staff's attention, and they never were brought to the staff's attention.
So there's a list of stuff that they, from what I remember...
But he's correct.
There's a list of stuff that they've been building in phases, right?
Yes. Some approved, some allowed by the conditional use permit that existed, some that weren't.
Oh, okay.
So this conditional use permit is bringing everything that has been done the last 15 or some odd years, or whatever, in the compliance, because they never let us know they were making those changes.
And that's why you want the one-year review, so that you can, okay, I understand.
One of the reasons, you're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that conditional use permit CU 9922 be approved with however many conditions.
Twelve, ma'am.
Twelve conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of conditional use permits CU 99-22 with 12 conditions as recommended by staff. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chitima.
Good morning. Was there a specific question regarding item six? Barb, again?
This is pretty much the same. This is, this particular item already went six years without a review, and now you want to put it in a five-year review. Why bother? Why not just let it, you know, go on a complaint basis only?
Certainly, when this was approved in 2008, they actually didn't put a structure on this property until 2015. So this was just basically a review that they actually got the structure on and an onsite in, so it hasn't really ever been reviewed in that kind of manner, I guess, is the way to put it. Because it just has gotten put on that lot.
No, that's going to involve the next one, too. I don't know why the planning department is involved with non-building, you know? Things change, people change, and why do we have to review properties when people just haven't gotten around to building? Nothing's changed. So that's why I wanted that discussed briefly.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Laurie? So the normal procedure that you guys go through, you know, this is a five-year review, so let's say the five-year review comes up and there's no issues, then would the condition be changed to complaint basis only, or we continue the five-year?
It would go to a complaint basis only.
That seems reasonable, okay.
Yeah, and I reassert that this has already gone six years. So it's, seems like it could, it could go beyond that.
Is there further discussion? Anybody else? Someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, we approve conditional use permit 0827 with six conditions.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of conditional use permits CU 08-27 with six conditions as recommended by staff. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item seven.
Chitima Sabun again, and by the way, I'm so sorry with my coughing, so. Okay, now Barb, do you have a specific question about this?
Really, it's the same thing. You know, this one is continually reviewed for lack of building. Nothing changes, you know? And, and the staff takes up time going out to the site and doing the paperwork in the office. If nothing's changing, why are these continual reviews? I, I just, in one year, in one year. It just seems like a waste of time and effort.
In the staff report, staff reviewed this conditional use permit for several times, and applicant kept mentioning that he would build the accessory structure within one year, and this has been for almost eight years now, and he kept...
Exactly, exactly.
And that's why we, we want to make sure that he will build it, and we don't have this conditional use permit keep opening it if he doesn't wanna, if he doesn't wanna go, how should I say? If he, if he doesn't build it, this conditional use permit, it, no, I mean, it's no use to have this conditional use permit for him.
So why continue it now, if it's already been eight years? That's, that's my question. It just seems like, again and again, with these CUPs, there's make-work, and it, it is not necessary. That's, I know it's one person's opinion, but I did want to have an opportunity to voice it.
Madam Chair, part of the reason that this one is on a one-year review as well is condition number eight states that he must apply for a new building permit for his proposed garage by May 24th of 2017. Otherwise, staff will be recommending that this conditional use permit be ended. The agent has mentioned that he still does plan on building the proposed garage. Another reason staff would like to continue reviewing this conditional use permit on a fairly regular basis is that we want to make sure that he does obtain a new building permit prior to beginning construction.
Thank you. Cassie? Is there further discussion? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I guess, question, I guess, was there any discussion about just ending it now and making him come back for a new conditional use permit? I kind of agree with Barb, I mean, some of these keep going on, 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 and on. They requested it, and they aren't acting on it, you know, should the sun set quicker?
We would like to do that. Yes, staff talked to the applicant, and he, I already said that this is what the condition of last year has been, and he still proposed that he would like, he intend, intended to build this garage, so staff and the applicant agree that he will complete this garage within next year, and he agree with every conditions of approval.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Kind of follow-up question, I guess, is, sometimes we've said, you know, do this by a certain date, or automatically revoked, and we aren't, being that strong this time, we're just saying must, but we aren't saying automatically revoked. Is there a reason why it's not automatically revoked versus just saying you must complete?
We could surely add that to condition number eight, that if he does not obtain an approved building permit and complete the construction of the proposed garage structure prior to May 24th, 2017, that this conditional use permit automatically be revoked.
Madam Chair? Yes, Laurie?
Is this the first time you've put a date, a deadline in for him?
What is conditional use permit?
For this conditional use permit? I don't, didn't look back through all of them.
Yep, I think it is.
Yes, this is the first time, I think he's had a specific date on him other than a review, period.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, I would move approval with the 10 conditions modifying eight, that, with the revoke statement in there, automatically revoked if not complete by that date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of conditional use permits CU 08-48 with 10 conditions recommended by staff, the exception being that condition eight would be reworded to include a statement that the conditional use permit will be revoked if the proposed structure is not built by the specified date. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair, I had one question.
Yes.
Do we normally put in the conditions automatic revoke, you know, revocation of it? I just want to make sure we're being consistent.
We have in the past, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Onto item 11.
Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Are there questions on number 11?
Laurie, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. You know, our concern when we originally denied this request was the condition number six, the evacuation emergency plan, and I noticed that, I don't think that was a condition before.
That they have in an emergency evacuation plan? It was. It just wasn't specific to actually identifying that there was floodplain on the property, but every vacation home rental is required as a condition to have an evacuation plan.
Okay, and those plans are reviewed by staff? It says they're on file, I just wondered, you know, they're reviewed, and you have a chance then to comment, and, you know, make sure that they're adequate?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a question as well. Under, in your analysis section on page four, I'm sorry, on page five of your staff report, it states that staff recommends to amend condition number two as cell phones receive adequate signal in the subject property, and the applicant has requested not to be required to install a landline.
Correct.
In, in condition number two, you say provided, that the landowner provide a working phone. I mean, what kind of phone would that be if it wasn't a landline? I don't understand.
Like a track phone? Like a cellphone?
Okay.
Type situation? The applicants are just concerned that installing a landline, there is not a landline up there currently, so they would have to put in an entirely new landline, and they're concerned with the, the cost of bringing in a landline. So they had requested that they not, not necessarily not be required to provide a phone onsite, just not that it be required to be a landline. Something more like a track phone, or...
And staff is okay with that kind of an option?
Yes. Staff has been out there, cell phones receive clear reception out there.
Who's, who's gonna monitor the recharging of the phone, et cetera?
That would fall upon the, the landowner to be responsible, similar to the landline. They would be required to, if it would, if there was a landline, they would still be required to make sure that the bill is paid and that the landline works. So similar to that, it would be up to the landowner to ensure that the, the phone remains in working operation.
Well, perhaps you want to write in there, a working phone.
It does say working phone.
Yeah, it says a working phone.
Does it say working?
Yep. Working phone, yep.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had another question. So have we ever not required a landline in a vacation home rental, is this the first time?
This would be the first one.
So as long as we feel comfortable with the cell reception, then we'll go ahead and allow that?
Yes.
Okay.
Staff is, staff is comfortable with it being, as long as there's some sort of working phone, staff is comfortable with it being a cellphone.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And I assume the houses, there's still portions of the house in the floodway?
Yes.
Oh, I guess, I feel like we're being, I know that we were overturned by the Board of Commissioners, but I feel like we're asked, being asked to approve something that I think is incorrect of placing people in the floodway.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, please go.
Do you recall from the, the Board of Commissioners meeting what the discussion was that, you know, persuaded them that this was a good idea?
The applicants were there, to my best recollection, there was several questions about last summer, when it was very rainy down in Hill City. There was some questions regarding if there was any flooding on that property during that very rainy time. The applicant stated that there was not, so to my knowledge, that is part of what contributed to the decision that they made. But the applicant was there with his legal representation stating that, that it wasn't a concern for them, because they hadn't had flooding before.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Sig.
There's Lamar and Loma procedures, if they're, to remove it, and to me, that's the proper way before you say, yes, it's okay in the floodway.
And I, I don't know if that is something that they have planned, is to try to go through FEMA to actually get it removed, I'm not sure.
I assume not, unless they're gonna be pushed, because it's time, costly and timely.
Joyce, would you like to come forward, have something to say on this issue?
Joyce Shagru. One point that was made that bothers me somewhat is that the attorney for this couple who own this made a statement that we already have five VHRs in, I don't remember what word he used, whether it was floodplain, flood hazard area, or whatever. And that's not been verified. I don't know if that influenced anyone on the commission, but it certainly popped out at me. If they've slid through before, we need to look at that, because we have a precedent. This one, we've targeted and tried to take care of the issue, but if we have five others out there, they need to be looked at. And I don't know if that influenced them at all. No one asked a question or asked, planning to verify that that was correct.
It would be interesting to see where those, where those homes are located, and if they're grandfathered VHRs. That would be interesting.
Because the committee, I think, what we're going to bring forth to you, I believe, is that none be allowed in a floodway. And that's logical. We also had discussion about if they're in a floodplain, should they have notice, you know, there's the evacuation plan, but try and protect these guests that come here.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there further discussion? Yes, Laurie?
Can I ask a question about what's included in the evacuation plan or the emergency plan for, for a property like this? Can you comment on?
Usually what's included in there is like a fire escape plan, where the exit doors are, where the exit windows are, where the fire extinguisher is, those type of situations, mostly for fire evacuation. I don't know that I've ever seen one for floodplain evacuation, but for fire evacuation, it usually identifies exit doors, exit windows, fire extinguisher, phone number for the fire department, for the police, that kind of thing.
Would you like to modify condition number six, Laurie, to include?
Well, I mean, you know...
And without floods?
I mean, my, my question was whether or not, I mean, it says it's on file, and you said the staff reviews it, and if it's not considered adequate, you get back with the owner, correct?
Yes, we would.
Yeah, so, I guess, you know, you have, you'd have to develop the conditions to make, you know, for what you consider is adequate notice, and, you know, floodplain, for floodplain evacuation, I don't know what that would be, but can we request that the staff help us identify those other vacation homes? Is that an appropriate thing to do, as part of the meeting, or later, maybe during the discussion?
Not inappropriate at all. It actually will become part of the discussion because of what the Vacation Home Rental Committee is proposing, so that information will be brought forward to this committee, or this commission, once the committee's done with their changes.
Okay. Thank you, PJ. Are there any further questions for Cassie?
Question?
Yes.
This, this property is in the floodplain or the floodway?
There is a small corner of it that it is in the floodway, most of it's in the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain.
Did we ever have a plat that showed that? I'm trying to remember, on the previous...
I don't know if we ever had a plat, but let me, I'm gonna pull up a picture here on Rapid Map to kind of show you where the floodplain and the floodway is.
Because it runs all along that one side of the lot.
It covers, yeah, it covers a vast majority of the lot. Oh, let me see if I can pull up, get a picture in here of where the house is. Okay, so the red there is the flood...
Way.
Way, and the blue is the floodplain, so this corner of the house here is in the floodway, the, almost the entire majority of the house is in the floodplain.
Could you explain the difference in those two terms for the audience, please? I've seen a lot of looks.
Try to put thousands of pages of stuff into a couple words.
Two sentences.
Floodway is basically the river of the flood, the actual fast flow, and then the floodplain is kind of the overflow. It still is moving, but not at a faster pace as a floodway.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Barb?
I think that makes a difference, because way it's stated in here is the property is in, but what's actually true is the house is in part of the floodway, and that's more accurate.
Exactly.
Exactly. Good point.
Mr. Chairman?
Just kind of maybe follow up PJ and what you're saying is, the, the way FEMA typically administers that is you can build in the floodplain if you build a foot above the, the level.
Right.
But typically, the floodway is saved, basically, is you don't encroach.
No building, yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It seems to me that good practice would suggest that we not do this. However, we sometimes stray from good practice. But it seems to me the judgment should be made by the Board of Commissioners if they, I mean, this to me is, sets a sorry precedent. I mean, a corner of the house, one, one portion of the house, half the house? I mean, where do we draw this line, you know? And so it would seem to me appropriate simply to deny this and have the Board of Commissioners overturn us if they choose to, and the applicant will have to make one more appeal. But it seems to me that we're setting a bad precedent by embracing poor practice here, in my judgment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Barb.
I couldn't agree more.
Lori, Madam Chair, and I'm guessing that, you know, the picture you're showing us can have a little bit of an accuracy, right?
It is Rapid Map, yes.
It's an overlay scenario. So in order to look, in order to know how much of the structure is actually in the floodplain, you'd have to look at the plat, right?
We could get, or get a survey.
Or get a survey.
Depending on when the plat was done, correct?
I mean, you know, just, just looking at it, it looks like it's a very small percentage of it, but that's a judgment call.
Could go the other way, too.
Yeah, yeah. It could be, it could be just the corner of one room, yeah.
Or it could be half the house. You just don't know.
And I know there's conditional use permit, again, it's about the use, and I believe that was brought up at the last time, this was before you. But according to FEMA regulations, because they're not, excuse me, substantially improving the property, they are allowed to have the building there.
Because it was just interior remodel, right?
Interior remodel under 50% of the total value of the structure, that's correct. So they're not substantially proven, again, this is about the use of that legal non-conforming structure.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Sig.
And we went through our discussion before, and I guess, I mean, to me, it's different to own the house and being recognized that is to be traveling public and totally unaware of that situation. So you put it in a list, it's easier to overlook. I just don't think that traveling public and people that are unaware should be put at risk.
Right, that's why this is a consideration of the use.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I think there's an important distinction that Sig makes, that this is not the owner, this is people visiting. And I, I don't think this is a significant impediment to the homeowner if, if they want to pursue this. But I, I would feel more comfortable by us acting by denying this simply because of its relationship to the floodway.
Madam Chair? Yes, Lori?
I know this probably isn't a fair question, but what kind of conditions do you feel would be adequate in an emergency evacuation plane for a home that's sitting in the floodway?
Our emergency evacuation plans usually go through a quick review through our fire coordinator and sometimes even down to Dustin. This is one of the first times these have been denied in floodway or floodplain. So we would, when that mitigate, if this is approved, that fire, that evacuation plan would go under review for, through the proper department.
So we probably don't have any idea yet what kind of, what's, well, you know, I'm thinking of, well, no, straddle, that was fire again, too.
Right.
We didn't really talk about, yeah, the flood, I'm trying to think of this.
Okay. Okay. I guess the issue in my mind, stepping aside from my role as chair and just making a comment, is that I don't know how many people who are on vacation who, who, you know...
Watch the weather.
Who, well, not only do they not watch the weather, but will they read an evacuation plan that's posted on the, the door of their vacation home rental? I would guess not many.
You got 10 people, 10 to 15 people.
Yep. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Judging from that picture, if the water was rising, there would be no way to evacuate because you'd have to cross the creek.
Right.
Yeah. In order to evacuate. The only evacuation plan possible would be to go out the back door and up the hill.
Well, right now, the evacuation, this way is toward the highway there, right?
The highway is to the south, down here.
Yeah, so...
The road.
Oh, yeah, okay. Run through the woods to the highway?
Anybody like to make a motion?
I would move we deny this on the grounds that it's in, portions of the property are in the floodway and it serves to be a hazard to...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to disallow the extension of conditional use permits CU 16-05. Is there further discussion?
Could, could we amend that motion to say portions of the house? So it's more specific, or do you prefer to leave it as it is?
Oh, you mean as opposed to property?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, that would be nice, I guess, it would be more clear perhaps, yeah.
Did you get that, Jerry?
Portions of the home are in the floodway. Is there further discussion? The motion on the table is to deny extension of conditional use permit CU 16-05. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item 20.
Oh, 18.
Nope, 20, we, we're, aren't we moving, oh, it was 20?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
All right, item 20 is conditional use permit 1616 to allow a commercial storage rental and painting business in a suburban residential district. Staff requested that this be moved up to the top of the regular agenda as I received a phone call from the applicant, Mr. Kasubi, this morning. Staff did during the review of this conditional use permit identify some issues on the property. Mr. Kasubi called me this morning and requested that this item be continued to the June 27th Planning Commission meeting to give him some time to look into the issues that have been identified and how he can go about correcting those. So staff is asking that this item be continued to the June 27th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Are there members of the audience who are here to speak to this issue? Anybody? Will you be able to be here at the next meeting, or would you like to make your comments now?
I don't, I don't know whether I'll be able to be here on...
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Stephen McCarthy, I live at 5740 West Highway 44. I don't, but the property, but I'm adjacent to the property. I look out my front window and I see this property. And I, I guess I'd like to make these points now, and maybe if I can return, make them again.
That's fine.
As often as I can. This is a residential area, I've lived there for 42 years. This property had a use on review in the 80s or even the late 70s. They granted the people who own the property to sell trailer houses, and they, they have been gone for almost 40 years. And in the interim, any number of buildings have been created there, some without permits, some illegally, some used as businesses, and at no supervision from the county or... I always thought there was a personal residence who had the ability to put up as many buildings as he wanted to. But, so I've lived with this situation for a long time and felt I had nothing to do about it. And especially it was hard to live with it because the last time I tried to refinance my house, the appraisal came in too low, or a lot lower than I had estimated. And when I asked the appraiser why my house didn't come up to what I thought was a, something I could finance, he said because I, I was adjacent to a commercial piece of property. And that really is almost, as far as I'm concerned, if this is an illegal operation there and, and has been, it's basically a taking of my property, I mean, a minimizing of the value of my property. And that's not right because this is a suburban residential. I'd also questioned Cassie at the, the office here, and this individual is asking for not one business, but two businesses. And the first business he's asking for is a storage business. And the second business is a painting business. And the, the term painting business connotes something different than storage. And Cassie says, no, he really just wants to store his painting material there and maybe do a little bit of painting. And, and that, to me, is this huge hole that he can do anything there if he runs a business. So if, I think at a maximum, he should be asking for a storage, a variance or a conditional use on review for a storage facility, and he can paint storage, he can put his paint goods there in the storage. But to ask for two, and one of them is a business, is totally outside the purview of suburban residential, so I hope you remember when this comes up again. But we're all brain dead, and please keep those in mind.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, are there questions, Chair?
I have a question, Steve.
Lori's, wait, Lori's first, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask you a question? Just to, you said you live adjacent, could you describe, we don't have a plat up, could you just say what direction adjacent to the property?
I'm kind of...
Because I know there was...
I'm south of it.
So you're, are you across the highway?
No.
Okay.
No, I am on the same side of the highway.
Closer to town or further away from town?
Because it looks to me like this abuts the highway on the south, that's why I'm asking.
Mister, Mister McCarthy lives right here.
Okay, closer to town.
There's one lot between, I think there's one lot between me and...
That, that small lot, and then you have the larger lot?
No, the one in red is not, is the applicant, that's where the arrow is, is my lot and house.
Oh, okay, all right, right there, thank you.
Jim, did you have a question?
You're not opposed to a storage business, but you're opposed more to the painting? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I was in the construction business, I, I'm, I'm really, really opposed to a painting business because when I was in the construction business, and most recently, you'd give all the woodwork to a painter. You know, all the trim and the doors, like the door behind you there, and he'd take them to a shop, he'd furnish them, sand them, and, and bring them to the site. It's not painted in place anymore. So that's my major concern, just the toxicity of what could come out of that building. And, and he could be painting cars. You know, I mean, the term of painting business is that. I'm also opposed to a storage building. My residence is, it goes down in value if I, if I'm adjacent to a commercial facility.
Madam Chair? Yes, Lori?
Can I ask another question? It looks like your lot is zoned highway services? No, it, are maps wrong?
Um, the, the pink on this map actually indicates the city limits. Mister McCarthy is actually inside the city limits of Rapid.
So all of these pink things along here are...
City limits.
City limits, yes.
Okay, so there is no highway services in this area?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mister McCarthy.
Thank you. I think there's one on the speaker.
Good morning, I'm Raleigh Hill, I am right next to Mister McCarthy in the county there, but I can return on your date, so rather than do a bunch of repeat, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, so...
Which lot do you live in?
Right above, right to the north of the subject property.
Okay.
And a little clarification on what Mister McCarthy was talking about, Midstate Campers, I suspect some of you know where that was.
Remember.
That was done in 71 under the, for the sale of campers and trailers only, and there's never been another application for conditional use since they moved out to the interstate in about 2000. Steve Lester owned that property and used that for storage of all his toys, if you will. So it's never had any other kind of a commercial operation though, since Midstate moved out of there. And I share Mister McCarthy's sentiments that you can put all the conditions on it you want and it still enables a commercial operation in a residential affecting the property value, so... But I'd be happy to return, but any other questions?
Any questions for Mister Hill?
Uh, Mister Hill, do you live way up on the, yeah, okay. So way up, almost to the top.
Yeah, where that barn is. But that, even though that's in the county, my parcel that's right next to the subject property is suburban residential, so for future development, it would be impacted. It's right next to the menagerie of buildings there, so that probably will never change, but calling it commercial will not help my cause, but...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Staff's recommendation is to continue this item to the June 27th Planning Commission meeting.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that conditional use permit CU 16-16 be continued to the June 27th meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue conditional use permit CU 1616 to the June 27th Planning Commission meeting. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll go back to item 18.
Good morning, Kelsey Roush, Pennington County Planning Department. Item 18 is a conditional use permit request to allow for a temporary assembly of people for a five-day spiritual gathering in a general agricultural district. This particular event has happened twice in the past that we have record of. There were two previous conditional use permits for this property in the past, in 1998 and 1999. Do you have any questions? It's kind of a different request, we don't get very many requests for assemblies of people, so...
I did have one question. In your list of conditions, condition number six states that no fires other than one ceremonial fire be allowed on the subject property. Will there be a sweat, do you know? I know there's a sweat lodge on the property, and that would require an additional fire.
The applicants are here, so if you have those kinds of questions, I will be able to answer them.
Hi, if you'd like to come forward and identify yourself, let us know who you are.
Hi, my name is Susan Stark Christiansen, I'm from Juneau, Alaska. And I'd like to first of all, thank you all and the staff for working with us, they've been wonderful. So thank you very much. There was a permit for a sweat lodge on the property. When we went back to get this permit, we did ask to, just to make sure that they re-permit the sweat lodge as well as the ceremonial fire.
Okay, so there will, there will be sweats, so there will be more than one ceremonial fire. Can we amend that condition then, Kelsey?
Oh, sure, mm-hmm, yes, we can. Okay, condition six. No fires other than one ceremonial fire and the sweat.
And sweat lodge fires as necessary?
Can I ask a question? Because the sweat lodge is internal and it doesn't go all the time, right?
No, no. There'll only be several, one or maybe one, two.
Okay.
And we do have, let's see, from the, the fire distor, what is this? Fire pit sweat lodge ceremonial ring, we do have a permit from the Black Hills Fire Protection District. I just got this this morning, they'll, they're going out today to do an inspection and then we will get the signed copy in the next couple of days.
Excellent. Jim, did you have a question?
Uh, so there's gonna be a fire in the sweat lodge, or the sweat lodge doesn't have a fire in it, does?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so then we're gonna have another fire outside?
Yes.
Is that right?
So there'll be two areas.
If the sweat lodge catches on fire, if that were to happen. But we really are talking about two fires.
Two fires, yeah.
Does anybody else have questions for Ms. Christiansen? Hope you enjoy your, your event.
I have a comment to make.
Yes, Jim.
Is this up near Castle Creek?
No, it's, let's see.
On Rashford Road, right?
Yeah, I think it's Slate Creek. It's off of, yeah, South Rochford Road at the intersection of Slate Prairie and South Rochford, approximately.
Yeah, I think it's near Castle Creek.
Yeah.
I always wanted to make one comment that's, years ago, I was fly fishing up on Castle Creek in the morning, and suddenly I heard this drumming and chanting, and at first I was really quite stunned, I thought, what's going on here? But I found it, I will say this, very comforting. And I fished with great success for another hour. So, in a sense, I'm partial to this.
So we'll make sure we pray for your next fishing.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, and I just wanna, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but if I'm not, then please donate it to the library. But this is a copy of my documentary film, The Wisdom of the Grandmothers, and a book on the same subject. And many of these grandmothers are some of the grandmothers that are coming to this gathering. So we wanted to present it to you as a gift. Thank you.
Cool. Nobody gives us gifts. Thank you. Are there further questions for Kelsey? Somebody care to make a motion?
An approval of item eight, conditional use sixteen dash eleven with sixteen...
Sixteen conditions.
Sixteen conditions modifying seven to recognize the sweat lodge fire as the second fire.
Actually, it would be number six.
Or six.
Oh, six, okay, yep, sorry.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permits CU sixteen dash eleven with sixteen conditions. Condition six modified to include not just a ceremonial fire, but also sweat lodge fires as necessary. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, oh, yep, Laurie?
Don't you need to modify seven also? I'm sorry, it should be modifying six and seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's both of them. It's both of them, yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Is that clear? Can we vote without repeating everything? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, enjoy your gathering. Onto item nineteen.
All right. Item nineteen is conditional use permit sixteen fourteen to allow a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters on the subject property while the applicant works to replace the single-wide mobile home that was destroyed by a fire in a suburban residential district. The applicant is Ron Toof, he's standing right next to me. As this property exists today, it's a zone suburban residential district, it is zero point four six acres. It's currently vacant of any permanent structures, the only thing on there right now is the recreational vehicle. It contains an onsite wastewater treatment system, and access to this property is off of Ravine Drive. Ravine Drive and Coppelstone Court are located within the Mesa View Estates Road District. This was routed through the interdepartmental reviews process for comments. There was some comments regarding the wastewater treatment system, that the RV should be hooked to it. That, those are included as conditions of approval. The Mesa View Estates Road District did have some concerns regarding some of the other properties located in this subdivision. And I do want to point out that our ordinance enforcement officer is working currently with several property owners within this subdivision regarding ordinance violations. And allowing this conditional use permit would actually clear an ordinance violation on Mister Toof's property for having the RV on there. There is a conditional use permit for this whole subdivision from nineteen eighty-seven, and it was approved to designate the properties as a mobile home subdivision. So the applicant would be allowed to bring in a new single-wide mobile home on this property without an additional conditional use permit, he would just need a building permit. So according to the deeds filed with the registered deeds, the applicant purchased this property in August of two thousand and fifteen. In February of two thousand and sixteen, the single-wide mobile home that existed on the property was destroyed by a fire. That was later found to be caused by arson. A copy of a couple Rapid City Journal articles identifying that have been included with your staff report. On April twelfth, staff received a complaint regarding an RV being lived in on the subject property, and that's when the ordinance violation case was opened from our end. On April thirteenth, our ordinance enforcement officer did speak with Mister Toof regarding the RV on the property. And that's when he stated he would like to use that RV as temporary living quarters while he continues to work to find a replacement mobile home to put on the property. On May eleventh, Mister Toof applied for a removal permit for the single-wide mobile home that was burned down. And then on May seventeenth, he applied for this conditional use permit. Staff has performed a site visit to the property, the RV is the only structure on that property. You can also see where Mister Toof, excuse me, has started leveling an area right over here to place the new mobile home. So he has started some work to try to replace that. The subject property did appear to be clean when I was out there, save for that there were a few vehicles that did appear to be licensed and operable. Staff has spoken with, spoken with the applicant regarding the use of the RV as living quarters. He is actively looking for a new mobile home to place on the property. He has stated that he does not believe he will be able to live in this RV through the winter, it will get too cold. Therefore, he is really actively trying. He does have a couple mobile homes that he has been looking at, he's just in the process of trying to get one out there. Staff has informed the applicant that if this conditional use permit is approved, there would be a very strict time limit on how long it would be approved for. And Mister Toof does not object to there being a time limit on that. Staff has received two formal letters and several phone calls from neighboring landowners with regard to this conditional use permit. A copy of the letters are included with your staff report. I do want to go through the considerations for the conditional use permit request as listed in our zoning ordinance, as I feel that it's important for this particular conditional use permit. There are five factors that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of a conditional use permit application. The first is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted, and upon property values within the immediate vicinity. The use of the RV as a residence on the property would be very temporary and subject to a strict timeline. At the end of the allotted time, a new mobile home must be installed on the subject property, or the RV must be removed. Staff does not see that there should be any long-term effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity, nor should it affect the long-term property values in the surrounding areas. However, staff has received complaints from neighboring property owners stating that the requested conditional use may have an effect on the use, enjoyment, and property values of the properties in the immediate vicinity while the RV is being utilized as living quarters on the property. The second consideration is the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any of the surrounding properties. The third consideration is that utilities, access, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. The subject property is served by an existing onsite wastewater treatment system and community water. The RV will be connected to the existing utilities, access to the property is off of Ravine Drive. And it appears that all necessary utilities, accesses, and other facilities are provided on the property, and staff did not identify any drainage concerns. The fourth consideration is that off-street parking and loading requirements are met, there is adequate parking on this property. And the fifth consideration is that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed conditional use by its very nature should have limited amounts of those things that should not be considered a nuisance. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit sixteen fourteen with thirteen conditions.
Thank you, Cassie, yes, Sig.
Cassie, I guess I have a question on number seven, condition seven.
Yes.
Is that the right terminology, new mobile home, or is he looking for a replacement mobile home? Is it, I mean, new, is it new new or new to him?
New, new to the property.
I think then it should be stated a replacement mobile home rather than new.
Yep, I can change that.
That's also in condition six and maybe in others too.
Yes, I can change that to anywhere where it identifies a new mobile home to say replacement mobile home. I can amend that.
Madam Chair, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Sig.
I guess a comment I had is, if this goes forward, that, to me, the one year seems extensive, four months have elapsed already. And the applicant himself is saying it's not gonna be there in the winter. So I mean, to me, that's excessive time, one year from now.
Staff is open to suggestions on the time limit. I'd put one year on there, but I am open to recommendations on how long it should last for.
Laurie?
Can I ask you a question about your picture?
Yes.
The stuff in the background, is that, is that an adjacent lot, or is that the existing lot?
That is an adjacent lot, that is actually this lot right here.
Okay, and is that, is that picture typical of other properties in the area? There's, you know, multiple vehicles and it looks like a trailer and some other things.
That belongs to the big house.
Yeah, I mean, is that typical or is that atypical of this area?
There's several properties in this subdivision that have different ordinance issues. I believe our ordinance officer is working with at least, I can't think of an exact number off the top of my head, but it's somewhere in the vicinity of five to ten property owners in this subdivision for things such as vehicles, lawns, debris, things along those lines.
I mean, it just looks like a lot of vehicles, I mean, they, they appear to be running, but that's quite a few things sitting there.
And our ordinance does not identify how many vehicles can be on a property.
They just have to be licensed.
They just have to be licensed and operable.
And just so I understand, when a new mobile home is put in here, he's required to disconnect the RV, but he can store the RV on the location, right? As long as it continues to be licensed?
Correct, yes, the RV can still be stored on the property, it just cannot be connected to any utilities and cannot be used as living quarters once there is a mobile home on the property.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So there is a septic system on the property.
Correct.
And, but it wasn't operating because no one was living in this place? How long was no one living in this place that burned down?
That I am not entirely certain of. It's my understanding that the person who lived in, or who owned the mobile home was actually incarcerated. I'm not sure how long they had been incarcerated.
Mister Toof is merely the applicant, or, I mean, you don't own the property?
Kind of, but not really.
Oh, kind of, but not really, what does that mean exactly?
It means, my mother owns it, but she's dead.
Well, was it...
And we're in the process of...
Going through state, going through probate?
Yeah, something like that, but it will be mine, so yes.
I'm just wondering, I see you have, you know, a stipulation that the septic system be, get an operating permit and so forth. But I'm wondering, does it work? Is it effective?
Yes.
It is, okay.
I'm using it.
You're not gonna have a problem with that?
Can you see where it's hooked up to?
Yeah, I can see that, but...
It does work.
It's just a pipe going into the ground, that doesn't show a lot. Anyway, I just wanted to, you know, say that we should be concerned about that. Hopefully, you have a stipulation that you get an operating permit, which is good.
Yeah, there is. Condition number four. Are there any other questions for Cassie? Do you have anything that you want to add, Mister Toof?
No, I've got a lot more digging to do. I think this coming up weekend or the next one, I got a backhoe coming out. Because the way the trailer that was set on there, it was set on two humps, it was a two-story trailer. And it would cost me too much to do it the same way it did, because I can't afford a crane to put up the trailer and then... But I'm leveling it out for around a fourteen by seventy-two.
Okay, and how long do you think that'll take? Would you be comfortable with three months or four months as opposed to a year?
No, I'd really like a year, because I'm broke. I took out a loan, a personal loan to get this place, and then my mom loaned me another fifteen. So that's why it's mine, but it was in her name, and I was making payments to my mother. But now that she's dead, I don't have any payments to make. But, you know, getting a backhoe and doing all this stuff does cost a lot of money. So a year would be good. But I won't be living in that in the wintertime, I tried it once, and the way the wind blows through that and the fire won't keep, the furnace won't keep going. I won't be there this winter. But I, I do need a year to at least just get it cleaned up to where I can get the mobile, I haven't even found a mobile home yet. I've found a few that I could afford, but it just ain't the right time to, I wouldn't have been able to pull it on there yet. So I have no problem, once I think I get it cleared up, I don't think I'll have a problem getting a mobile home for it.
Okay, are there any questions for Mister Toof? Okay, thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Jim.
I'm sort of inclined to think six months would be just fine for this, that's my feeling. I'm afraid if we give a year, I don't know, I mean, we got good weather, six months. I'm kind of inclined to think that we should do, Mister Toof should do something more expeditious. But that's just my view.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, maybe we could give him three months this year and three months in the spring.
Three months this year and three months in the spring?
I mean, because, well, because, you know, if you...
Because the winter is not productive.
Because winter is coming.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes, Sig.
I guess, I mean, I brought that up too, that I think that's excessive, I mean, four months has already elapsed. I think a year from now, we're gonna be talking about this again. From, I just have a concern that if action hasn't been taken more dramatic than has in the last four months, I'm not sure that another four months is gonna improve that much. So I would rather see a more accelerated, accelerated schedule. There, from some of the letters, I know we can enforce covenants, but I mean, to me, there are a fact that covenants exist, and they should be at least considered, not enforced by the county. But there should be at least a recognition that covenants exist. And this is obviously contrary to those covenants.
Do you care to make a motion?
Not really. Let me think about it. I guess I would make a motion to approve, but change, any reference to one year, go to six months. So it would be with thirteen conditions, and then modifying at least, well, let's see, five, six, seven, all the reference new. I think that needs to be a replacement mobile home. And I don't know if a replacement mobile home, what conditions, if any, the staff expects as far as condition? I mean, is it gonna be a thirty-year-old mobile home that's barely standing? Or are we talking about a two-year-old mobile? Well, that's, I'm just saying, we don't, there's no stipulation in here to reference, you know, what kind of limits.
Correct. Without building codes, staff, he could pretty much move on any sort of mobile home. Without building codes in the county, we don't make any stipulations on age of mobile homes or anything along those lines.
There's a motion on the floors, there's a second.
I'd second that.
If I can say something?
Yes. Will you come to the podium, I'm sorry, we need to be able to hear you.
I've been pretty vigilant and quick about, you guys don't, don't look like I've been working hard. But when this place burnt down, it took me less than a week to clean it up. Across from Family Thrift, there's still a burnt-down house there that hasn't been moved or touched, you know? So it might not look like I've done a lot, but if you could have seen it when it was burnt, and how much I have done, you'd know I've been busy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I make a comment too, that I think based on Mister Toof's description of his financial issues and his mother dying and going through probate, I think maybe it's reasonable to give him more than six months. I think that should be a consideration.
I agree.
Well, maybe, I don't know if, what the procedure is as far as withdrawing my motion, or I guess, or amend it. I guess I would amend it, then maybe to, I'd like to see it come before us in six months, just to see what progress is being moved.
I would, I don't mean to interrupt, but I would agree that perhaps in six months, if he needs an extension, we could provide that, but we should be able to see some progress. And if we give him a year, it's very possible he'll show up in a year, and there'll be little progress, and he'll want an extension. And I, I've seen this happen over and over and over, where we've done this. We, people, you know, just don't get things done for a variety... We, people, you know, just don't get things done for a variety of reasons. This, I think, is a bit of an impetus. I, I, I think it's important and the neighbors, the people who live in the area, I think, would appreciate, uh, uh, a very expeditious, uh, process here. So I, I still think the six month is, is, uh, important and, you know, maybe we give him an extension at that point if he can show progress and reason for not being able to complete it in that period of time.
Madam Chair, maybe it can be simply changed that this condition be reviewed in six months. And we still leave all the references to a year the same.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that might be a good idea too, 'cause then he can show us progress and if he can show progress, then, right.
Okay, would you like to make a substitute motion or amend your motion?
Uh, I would amend my motion. I, it sounds like, I believe Jim was the second, right? Uh, but anyway, I would amend my motion to, uh, basically, uh, change any reference to new to replacement mobile home and then, uh, just, uh, change item thirteen to be reviewed in six months.
And is, are, are those changes okay with the second?
Yeah, right.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit CU sixteen dash fourteen with thirteen conditions. Cassie will go through the conditions and amend anywhere it says new mobile home to replacement mobile home. And condition thirteen will be changed to this, this conditional use permit be reviewed in six months on a complaint basis or as directed by the Pennington County Planning Commission and/or Board of Commissioners, et cetera. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, would that be six months of today?
Yes.
Okay.
Item twenty-one.
Uh, are you gonna send me the, Evan?
Yes.
Thank you.
PJ Conover, Director, Plan Department. Item twenty-one is layout plat sixteen oh seven for Raymond and Shirley Darrow. Um, so, uh, Fiskland Surveying as the agent and, uh, a member of that, um, organization from Fiskland Surveying is here in the audience today if you have any questions. The subject property is roughly ten acres. Um, again, this is a layout plat. This is just a preliminary look at the property so that the property owner understands what is required if they're looking to move forward with, uh, subdivision of the property. Currently, like I said, it's around ten acres. Uh, the proposed lot A would be on the north side of the property, which would be about five point five acres. Uh, there's a copy of the, of, uh, the proposed layout plat. Lot B would be approximately four point four oh acres and located to the south. Each has their own, uh, access point, the north with a private access, which has been recorded, registered deeds, and the south off of Hazel Lane with a document that has been recorded, the register of deeds. Um, lot A would be fi- roughly five point five zero acres. Uh, limited agriculture district is the current zoning. Future land use is PUD sensitive. It has a single-family residence currently on the property from, with a building permit from two thousand and two. Again, it has a legal access to the property. There is a current operating permit. There's also a detached garage. And, uh, lot B is vacant of all structures. And if, the only thing that would really change right now with, with subdivision of the plat would be the addition of the eighty-foot wide major drain adjustment. And what is not pictured on here would also be, from the power company's suggestion, is that their power lines be indicated on the next plat that, that is submitted. Um, because the lots are becoming, um, smaller in size, they're also required to do a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, they're asking to rezone from the current zoning down to low-density residential district, which has a three-acre minimum, and they, they would exceed, um, those requirements. This was routed through the interdepartmental review and the, pretty much the only item of comment that came back was that of the, um, power company. So, in conclusion, the applicant's requesting, requests, um, appear to be comparable to the surrounding land use, um, including their, um, comprehensive plan and rezone applications. And just to reiterate that, plat sixteen oh seven is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision and the general scope of conditions, and future action by the landowner may be required and subdivision regulations met. Uh, therefore, staff recommends approval of sixteen oh seven with thirteen conditions.
Thank you, PJ. Are there any questions? Yes, Sig.
Yes, too many questions today for me.
That's okay.
Uh, PJ, I guess I have a question on, and I'll preface this by saying I was gonna kind of research through the ordinances ahead of time. I didn't get the time, finish doing that, but number three on the wildland, uh, fire mitigation plan. Yes, I'm not opposed to it, maybe the applicant isn't either, but, but under what authority is that, their ordinance that requires that? And, and is that only required of new landowners or land that's being subdivided and not necessarily of existing properties?
No, it's been done.
I know we've done it.
It's been a requirement from, it's become a requirement from Denny. It takes, it would take, sorry, it would take some research to find out what the authority comes from for that. But I know fire mitigation plans, um, have been required from the board and from this commission through Denny and through our conditional use permits for as long back as I can remember.
And I don't disagree. I know we've done that, but I mean, it's always kind of, it's been in my mind, is their ordinance that directs that, that their authority to require that? Like I said, I agree it's a good idea and the applicant may not be opposed. I'm just, this is one, I, I think we had one even in the consent calendar and I didn't pull it just for that reason, but I mean, um, I, I just, maybe that's more, I, discussion for, for, you know, under membership items or something like that. I guess I'd like to know what the, the authority is on that.
We definitely research it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for PJ? Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue? Would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll move it. We, uh, recommend approval of PL sixteen oh seven with thirteen conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. You can take your pick of seconders. Um, to approve PL sixteen oh seven with the thirteen conditions as recommended by staff. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two, rezone sixteen oh five and comprehensive plan amendment sixteen oh five to rezone ten acres from limited agriculture district to low-density residential district. This is just, um, an additional staff, uh, report to the layout plat you just approved. So basically, the current lot is pictured on the screens. It's limited agriculture, about ten acres. The future land use is plan unit development sensitive. They're asking it to go to low-density residential, which, as you can see, most of the area to the south and the, uh, west is low-density residential with limited agriculture to the north and the south.
Would somebody care to make a motion?
So move.
One second.
I think it's been moved and seconded to approve rezone RZ sixteen oh five and comprehensive plan amendment CA sixteen oh five with no conditions of approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item twenty-three.
Before we get to twenty-three, there was, uh, one of the missing, uh, comments came back from one of the Pennington County staff after the staff report was written, so I just would like to pass it out.
Sure.
We're twenty-three?
We're at twenty-three, yeah. Thank you. Pardon us while we take a minute to read this.
Ready to go? We'll discuss those in a minute.
Go for it.
Okay, item twenty-three is plan unit development sixteen oh three to rezone twelve point nine one acres from general agriculture district to plan unit development to allow for a specialty resort development to include such uses as a vacation home rentals, uh, weddings, receptions, picnics, family reunions, uh, satellite church for up to a hundred, a hundred fifty people, church functions, parties, single-family residents, bed and breakfasts, storage, gift shops, spas, cabana, bistro, detached accessory structures and living quarters duplexes, et cetera. The applicants and agents are Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Century Home Crafters LLC, Century Hone Land Holdings LLC, and Summer Creek Inn LLC. Other landowners are Mark and Lindsay Gardner, David and Katie Evangelisto, Sherry Evangelisto, and Ann Evangelisto. Uh, what I read earlier from the request, that's how it was applied for. That's how it was advertised. Since, uh, the advertising in, uh, prior to the staff report being met, uh, written and is actually in the staff report, they have withdrawn the request for the satellite church.
Okay, question about the et cetera.
Okay.
What, what the heck does that mean? Living quarters duplex, et cetera.
Jerry, you, you wrote it. Do you wanna? There's a, there's a, a number of items that they've asked for. The et cetera is just how it was advertised, not how it's gonna be approved.
Okay. Okay, continue.
Yep, no problem. So, um, just before we go on, this PUD is, is extensive, just because there's thirty-three lots that are involved. And we're upwards of now, in writing, sixty conditions, but I'll be asking for sixty-one based on the comments that you, uh, were received by the fire coordinator that are in your hands. A significant portion of those, probably over forty-five of those, are actually from the, from the applicant's request because they're asking to have some of their covenants enforced in the PUD. And this is the only way to do it, is to put it into the PUD. Otherwise, the county can't help with, with the enforcement of square footage for buildings, the look, the size, location, and stuff like that. So that's, so the bulk of the conditions that are in there are per the applicant's request. In two thousand fifteen and sixteen, the applicant, um, had, after they bought the property, they've been working on it. They've done a lot of things that require building permits, and then they would come and get them after the fact, or construction permits, permits or conditional use permits. And where they like to go with the property since that time, uh, conditional use permits just aren't cutting it anymore. Uh, they're still gonna need construction permits for things, building permits, signed permits. But the scope of their project now, a plan unit development to encompass everything into one document for all thirty-three properties seems the most appropriate to do instead of multiple conditional use permits spread throughout this entire subdivision. Um, so we talked with the applicant about that. They were actually, uh, very encouraged by that and we've been working on this for, for months and it's now before you today. Uh, they've received, uh, in two thousand and seven, they've actually requested a rezone of some of the subject properties and change a comprehensive plan amendment from general agriculture to highway service district. That was denied. Uh, this is just a basic history for the people in the audience. And again, in two thousand and seven, they asked to rezone additional properties from high, from general agriculture to highway service. That was denied. And two thousand and eight, they requested a conditional use permit for a bed and breakfast. It was approved in March two thousand, two thousand and eight and revoked in June two thousand and, uh, ten, per the applicant's concurrence. Uh, a conditional, conditional use permit to allow a recreational resort to include a bed and breakfast, up to ten rentals, and special events, weddings, wine tasting, rehearsals and diners. That was approved by the planning commission on June fourteenth, two thousand and ten. We're on page four of thirty-three, if anybody's following along. Uh, top of page five, on June twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, conditional use permit ten seventeen was revoked with the applicant's concurrence and replaced with conditional use permit fourteen oh four, which was approved by the planning commission on April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen to allow a recreational resort to include a bed and breakfast, up to ten rentals, special events, wine tasting, weddings, rehearsal dinners and family reunions. Um, if this PUD is approved ultimately by the Board of Commissioners, conditional use permit fourteen oh four will need to end. And a, a number of the conditions from conditional use fourteen, uh, fourteen oh four have been incorporated into this plan unit development. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, there was construction permit fourteen oh seven, and it was denied without prejudice and brought back again in two thousand and fifteen. It was approved by the planning commission in May. It was approved for, for an extension by the planning commission in May of two thousand and sixteen. And the next review of that, of construction permit will not be until April two thousand and seventeen. There's additional construction permit fifteen oh nine to grade and level hillsides on lot ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fifteen. We're on page six on the top right now. Uh, that was approved by the planning commission in May two thousand and fifteen, approved for extension by the planning commission in May two thousand and sixteen. And the next review would be, um, April two thousand and seventeen. There's also road construction within a section line permit, CS fifteen oh four, to bring into compliance a road within the section line, approved by the Board of Commissioners ultimately on May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. The next review is set for May two thousand and eighteen. So the existing conditions on the property, again, they're all currently zoned, general agriculture, with the future land use of plan unit development sensitive. And it didn't really come across in the maps that I supplied for you, but this is a close-up of the subject property. They're centered in the middle, surrounded by public land, suburban residential, low-density residential. There's a PUD up in the top right corner, but a sent, but if you, you know, if you can follow along, they probably can't see it at home, but all this right here is plan unit development sensitive. There is a section line that runs to the, I'm sorry?
That's future land use.
This is future land use only, yes. I'm trying to get back to, okay. There is a section line that runs on the north and to the west, uh, the east side of the property. This section line is off of Rapid Map. It, and even our Arc Maps, it is not accurate. It actually follows the eastern lot lines of lot six, uh, eleven, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two and twenty-three B. That's gonna come into play later, but does not affect any of the lots for the plan unit development to the north. Just for the record, the lots that are going, that are requesting to be included into the plan unit development are lots three and four, seven, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three B, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four and lot forty-five. The proposed uses on each of these lots vary. Um, that's partly why this, this conditional use or this plan unit development was so extensive. The, a bulk of the uses are gonna be surrounded, are gonna be located mainly on lots three and four, which are, which, um, are, you can see right about one o'clock on the drawing here. Also, lots ten, eleven and twelve. Those are where the conditional use permits basically lie for the bed and breakfast, the wedding receptions, the parties. They are looking to do on ten, eleven and twelve, they're, through the construction permit, they're actually leveling that ground now and improving it with some retaining walls. They're looking to put some, uh, grow some grass up there and also put some vegetation and ultimately they pour a slab for a tent to be able to hold some, some, uh, parties. And that request is actually gonna go over the lot lines of ten, eleven and twelve as they exist today. So on page eleven of thirty-three, section six A, are the proposed uses for three, four, ten, eleven and twelve. And as I just go through quickly with the multiple uses that they have requested, some are allowed and permitted to be requested through a plan unit development. Some are, some are not listed. But as we've been consistent with other things that we do, it doesn't mean that they cannot ask for it. So I spelled out in the condition, in, through the plan unit development, uh, staff report what are listed and the items that are not listed specifically. And if there's any questions about that, I'll just keep moving on. On lots twenty-seven, which is the lot, uh, promised to the center, south center of the plan unit development request, there is an accessory structure that list, that exists on the building. The applicant received two building permits, one for, um, the, single-family residence. I believe the other was for a detached garage and then also this garage. Uh, the only item that was, that was built was the, was the detached garage, which ultimately puts the, uh, property in violation. Also, lot seven is a recreation, an RV lot. There's three spots for recreational RVs. Uh, the applicant actually, um, was renting those out. Uh, the state's attorneys, um, had spoken with them. They got some things worked out. And as of, as of this time, those are only being used as storage. With the PUD request, the applicant is not, from what he's told me during a site visit, he's not looking to rent them out or to accept any money for them. They're only going to be used for visitors, to residents for the PUD or for visitors, um, to the, to the bed and breakfast. So he said, he's not looking to use that as a commercial site. Proposed setbacks. Let me get back up to this other one here. Okay. So the applicant, because of the constraints of the size, uh, because of the size constraints in a lot of lots, is, is looking to be a little bit creative with the setbacks that they're requesting on a number of lots. So we're on page sixteen of thirty-three right now, section seven, proposed setbacks on PUD lots is submitted by the applicant. Uh, the applicant has submitted map A to illustrate their request for setbacks on each lot. There are lots to consider such as corner lots and double frontage lots. So the applicant's request for lots three, four, seven, again, I'm reading these for the record. Three, four, seven, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty-one, forty-two, forty-four and forty-five. The applicant is requesting a fifteen yard, uh, fifteen-foot front and rear setback with, uh, ten feet on each side. On lot, um, lots twenty, twenty-one, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-five and forty-three, the applicant is requesting a ten-foot setback on the front, rear and sides of all, of all property lines. Lot twenty-nine, fifteen. Lot twenty-nine, fifteen-foot setback on front, rear, and sides. Lot sixteen, nineteen, twenty-two, and twenty-three B, these are the ones that actually border the section line. The applicant is requesting a zero-foot setback on the property lines that border the section line, because the section line has thirty-three feet of public right-of-way on either side, and then on top of that, whatever the setback is determined. So they're asking to use that thirty-three feet as a setback and actually have a zero-foot setback. Before I go on, in addition, what the applicant is asking to have on lots ten, eleven, and twelve is a zero-foot setback on the interior lot lines, so they can, they already have a conditional use permit for, uh, to put, uh, tents up there and to use it for overflow, um, for parking. They also are allowed to use that for the parties, the, and the weddings, and things that come off of the bed and breakfast. Uh, they are just asking to have a zero-foot setback on those lot lines, so they can build over the lot lines with a temporary tent, or possibly a, a permanent structure in the future. It's all, it's all gonna complement the bed and breakfast, which is located on lots three and four, which actually goes over the lot lines, but has developmental lot status, and therefore, that lot line technically doesn't exist, which is why you really don't see it on this, on this, um, this map. Off-street parking was required for the conditional use permit for the bed and breakfast, up to a hundred and fifty people. Uh, they utilize part of lot three, part of lot ten, le, uh, twelve, and overflow on forty-five. They're required to have thirty-five parking spaces, they have upwards of forty-one spaces or even more if required, with no parking on the streets. They are asking to include signs in their planned unit development. Let me get to a picture here of the sign. They built a, let's see, sorry, there's so many pictures on here. Thank you for all the pictures, Nancy, by the way. Um, on the very top of this panoramic picture, if you follow the steps up to the north, you can see an engineered wall up on the top. They're looking to actually stain the color of that wall to match the surrounding rock and, um, into a natural color, and to put, um, a sign similar, maybe not identical, but similar in size and scope to that Summer Creek advertising sign. This is a subdivision sign, they're looking to add the other one for the, technically, the business sign. So they're asking to add that into the PUD as items they can request. Again, they would still be required to have a sign, a sign permit for anything that they do inside the PUD. Minimum, section twelve, on page twenty of thirty, minimum and maximum square footage and/or numbers of units. Again, the, essentially, the bulk of what's coming in the staff report after that, except for this, the routing comments, are per the applicant's request. A lot of the staff report is incorporating what the, what the applicants have been wanting to do for some time. The applicants, what you, what you'll see when you look through the request for comments is a lot of comments to the zero-foot setback. The comments were based originally on what the applicants submitted to us. Since that time, and after a lot of these comments were received, they've amended their request to not include zero-foot setbacks on multiple lots. They're only looking for zero-foot setbacks on ten, eleven, and twelve. There were, there were considerably more since then, but just like the satellite church, they withdrew that request. So through the staff report, I indicated that even though somebody mentioned that, that's not what the applicants are, are looking to do anymore. And also, with that satellite church, if you'll notice, um, the comment from the highway department, they said that a road would need to be improved to accommodate the extra volume of traffic. Um, they've, again, since withdrew that request, and the highway department, with the updated comment as you have, no longer requires the improvement to the road, because it's not changing the amount of people that are coming to the, the property through, through the bed and breakfast now. Now later, when I start building residents, the road district's gonna have to address the roadways. Um, so the comment that I passed out was for the fire coordinator from, from Denny Gordon. And as you can see, especially with item one, he's referring to the zero-foot setbacks on various lots. It's only, only will actually refer back to ten, eleven, and twelve, but, um, and this came up with one of the last staff reports, is a fire mitigation. He's, he's requiring, uh, fire mitigation plan, um, prior to any new construction occurring within the PUD, or that they require sprinklers to be, uh, put into the homes. So the applicant has requested to rezone the subject property to a planned unit development, since planned unit development, which is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan and future land use, uh, designations. Section two thirteen of Pennington County zoning ordinance requests that the following criteria be reviewed when a planned unit development is proposed. The appropriately, the appropriate, number one, the appropriate relationship to the surrounding area. Summer Creek Inn is currently in operation and has been for some time. There are privately owned parcels, um, within the residence located within the proposed PUD. However, at this time, most of the lots are vacant. The applicant's, uh, multiple and/or requests for lots within the PUD may not all be appropriate for the proposed PUD, but the request use of the single-family residences and/or vacation home rentals may be the most appropriate use. With that, the more construction there is, the more people there will be, and possible more noise for the, uh, from the proposed uses, that may have an effect on neighboring property owners. Item number two, the provisions are made for internal street system design for the, for the type of traffic generated. The interior street system has been platted since nineteen sixty-one. The, the entire interior roadways are gravelled, though the, the varying degrees with, um, they're gravelled to varying degrees with varying degrees of maintenance and care. As building permits are applied for from lots within the center and the south end of the proposed PUD sixteen oh three, the planning department and the highway department would like to see the existing roadways improved. Item three, that there is a functional open space for optimum preservation of natural features. PUD sixteen oh three is being requested on heavily tree lots that are, that steadily increase in elevation as you move south through the PUD. The PUD is bordered by US public domain or forest land, and the applicant anticipates an overall lot coverage of only twenty percent throughout the PUD. Number four of seven, that privacy in terms of the needs of individual families and neighbors is provided. It is unclear if the needs of individual families and neighbors will be provided through PUD sixteen oh, if PUD sixteen oh three is approved. Many of the landowners are family members, um, of the applicants, and overall, with the, with the applicants, they own the largest number of lots within the existing subdivision. There are forty-five lots within the subdivision, and the applicant and their extended family own roughly thirty-three of the lots. The applicants and some of the neighbors have had conflicts, and it is unclear if PUD sixteen oh three will help or hinder these relationships. Item five, that there are provisions for pedestrian traffic for safety, separation, convenience, and access to points in common areas and attractiveness. The area is hilly and heavily tree, the applicant has not indicated if sidewalks will be built. Item six of seven, the building types are appropriate to the density and site relationship. The applicant's proposals for primary and accessory building appearances do appear to be in harmony with the existing allowed resort and residential use within the subdivision. Too many lots with single-family residence and guest homes or living spaces within the accessory structures may increase density and traffic flows above the handling capacity of the existing interior street system. Item seven, that there are adequate provisions for sewer and water systems as approved by the Pennington County Environmental Planner. The applicant will be required to either provide on, um, one porta, porta potty for every fifty guests or upgrade the onsite wastewater treatment system, which must be approved by the South Dakota Department of Transportation and Natural Resources. At the time of this building, at the time building permits are applied for additional proposed uses, sewer and water systems will be addressed. Through the analysis and through the staff report, some of the requests from the applicant have been subtly changed and appear as, uh, conditions of approval. And the applicant can speak to those if they have any, have any questions. I'd like to add a condition, um, to the conditions of approval, make it item sixty-one, that prior to a building permit being applied for in PUD sixteen oh three, the applicants of the PUD meet with the Pennington County Fire Coordinator to develop an acceptable fire mitigation plan. Future construction within the PUD will require the landowners to sign the approved fire mitigation plan, prior to the approved, to the approved building permit being received. And with that addition, uh, staff would recommend approval of planned unit development sixteen oh three with sixty-one conditions.
You recommend approval?
Yes.
Are there questions for PJ? Thank you very much.
No, you're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Laurie.
Can I ask a question where the, um, could you show on like this map A or on something where the actual access points are? Because there was a question from the fire coordinator that there be at least two ingress and egress.
There's multiple.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm gonna go back to an aerial. So they have the one up here to the north, which is the main one off of Taylor Ranch Road. There's one over on this side off, on the three eighty-five, and there's one more concealed by the trees, which you can't really see on the three eighty-five.
And they are existing?
Two of them are, I believe.
Two, okay. But there's nothing at the south end? Nothing down here?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
There is one house down on that end, but most of the lots are vacant.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions?
Yes. I guess, uh, PUDs, I guess my experience, I guess more with the city is that PUDs are typically formed in areas first being developed, you know, rather than form a PUD around houses that were bought into what they thought were buying into a neighborhood area. You know, I know you listed thirty-three out of, what, forty-five lots here are owned by the applicants, so, uh, I mean, they have control, but, but to me, it seems a little awkward to do it after the fact on a PUD. Uh, and I guess, just a question on the zero setback, uh, was there any discussion of just replating those lots to avoid the issue of the zero setback?
There was, the applicant is not looking to consolidate the pla, the lots at this time, which is why they withdrew the multiple lot, um, request and just limited it down to ten, eleven, and twelve, which they already have the conditional use permit for. But your, your comments about the PUD, that's the intent of the PUD, is it has not been used that way in the county.
Are there additional questions? I guess I have a couple. Some of these lots are miniscule, I mean, nine-hundredths of an acre. And some of the conditions for these lots, um, say that they wanna have, um, bed and breakfast or specialty resort allowed on those lots, that makes little sense to me. Also, when I think about PUDs, I think about places like Canyon Springs, where they have an extensive water and sewer system that had to be approved by D E N R before the PUD was approved. And as far as I can tell, there's not any of that with this request. And also, um, for Canyon Springs and other PUDs that we've dealt with as a commission, there's been open space that's available to all the members of, uh, the, the owners of the residences of PUDs, and I don't see anything about that in this request either. And I think that's one of the key functions, um, in the ordinance of PUDs, is to have some recreational open space for the residents. And I'm, I'm guessing that lots ten, eleven, and twelve, if they become kind of, um, the party area associated with the bed and breakfast, that that's not gonna be available for the other residents. And then there's the issue of, if there is an open space designated on some of these lots, will that open space be available to the residents of the community who are not members of the PUD? I mean, this is just very, the whole thing, to me, seems pretty awkward.
Madam Chair, I have a comment more than a question. And my comment is that you've been working on this for months, and we received this on a Friday afternoon and are expected to review it over a weekend. I think more time is needed for something this extensive. The comments from the various members today have been helpful to me, but, uh, I didn't have time enough to absorb everything that was in here. My second comment is it seems more like a wish list than a plan. And, uh, that is not what we're in the business of approving.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, um, just so I understand? Even though, um, the applicant owns the majority of the lots, the lots with the X's will be included in the PUD, correct?
Those are not included in the PUD.
Oh, they are excluded.
They're excluded, they did not wanna join the PUD.
Okay.
There are some lots that are in the PUD, just talking about the road district, 'cause those lots come back to road districts' history. But there are some lots that are not in the road district that are asking to be included in the PUD. But all those lots with X's are not in the road district.
Is there a provision, if the lots with the X's, is there a, a provision where they could become part of the PUD?
Through an amendment.
In the future, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, just like we amend PUDs all the time?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Sig.
Again, this is kinda like, uh, more of a comment than a question, but I mean, I guess that's kinda my concern about forming a PUD after the fact. I mean, typically, I, you're trying to do a PUD for an area, and to, to me, to exclude people that have already bought lots, you know, with expectation it's a normal development, it seems like it's, it's forcing them into situations that they don't want to, and they, you know, haven't joined the PUD, probably for a reason, you know, and so I, I, I know we're trying to, we've worked, you know, worked with this area before and trying to resolve issues, and, you know, this may be getting closer, but I think it's, you know, to me, the commitment made by the county when you approve a subdivision, that it's, that's, that's your expectation, that it's gonna stay that way, and then change it, the rules considerably after the fact is concerning to me.
Are there any more questions for PJ before the applicant comes?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the intent then on the part of the applicant to sell off these lots? Or is the intent to build something himself that will be rented, like vacation home rentals? Does he expect to dispose of most of these lots to individual owners, or, or do you have any idea?
Some, but I think it's a better question for the applicant.
Yes.
Are there any more questions for PJ?
I wouldn't go very far.
Oh, no.
There's just one short question.
Yes.
There's been a, a bit of discussion about not, um, you know, having PUDs approved prior to development. I'm thinking there was at least one where we put a PUD on an existing.
You put PUDs on a lot of existing.
Yeah.
I mean, you just did harsh shorting. It's, it's not this extensive, there's, there's a lot out there that don't have this many.
But, but still, I don't think that's a fair comment, that we never, you know, put a PUD on something, you know, prior to development, 'cause I, I think there's situations where we've done that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Often.
Yeah.
Oh, and I'd like to clarify, I never said never.
Well, I, yeah, I, I heard never, but.
Yeah, I, I think it's, we have done it, but it's been pretty rare, and they've been very small.
It's been a while since we've done one like this.
Yeah. Would the applicant care to come forward? Make a pitch to us.
Good morning, I'm Dan Evangelisto, this is my wife Nancy Evangelisto. Uh, we did this PUD application on recommendation from the planning department and a couple of the county commissioners that we've talked to in the past, and so we're kind of going off of their lead. It's our hope, this property has been sitting vacant primarily since nineteen sixty-one. We bought it approximately ten or eleven years ago. We've cleaned the property up a lot, we've, you know, we're one of the very first people to enroll in the forestry thinning program for pine beetles and, and fire prevention. We took approximately four thousand trees off this property and removed all the dead debris. So it's, has been a big improvement to the property since we bought it. It is our intention on the lots, um, to sell them off, to answer your question. And, and we're hoping that buyers will buy multiple lots. The lots, several of the property owners that aren't part of the PUD have purchased four lots in a group and have put one residence on that, and we're hoping that's what happens. 'Cause you had mentioned that some of the lots are very small, and so that's why we're hoping that some of the lots will be combined. That being said, we don't know if somebody's gonna buy one lot, two lots, three lots, or how many. So that's kinda for the reasoning for asking for the setbacks. In the issue of the setbacks, this was zone, zone general ag, which is usually acreage, so the twenty-five-foot setback makes sense for large parcels. This zone back in nineteen sixty-one are replatted, still kept those building setbacks, and it almost makes them impossible to build on some of them. And so, out of the six homes, I think there are already existing in there, I think over half of them, or at least half of them, have come in and asked for setback variances and have received setback variances. So I'm just trying to clean things up, simplify things a little bit. Was it kind of our intent for the building setback, I think are, uh, comparable to suburban residential setbacks.
Any questions?
You guys have any questions for us that we could address?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I just need to make a comment too, that I visited the facility on Saturday, just so people knew, that I went out there and looked. so people knew that I went out there and looked.
Okay. I have one question. In a number of the conditions which I'm, I understand you wrote, you request that things be approved in writing by you.
Or the Architectural Review Committee, because we're not going to be there forever.
Right. And for the kinds of materials used in buildings, signs. I hesitate to give you that much power. I mean, that just seems, I know you want to control what happens in the subdivision, but when somebody buys a piece of property, it seems like they ought to be able to, you know, build within reason and according to the covenants, the things that are accepted. And to have, have to have your written permission seems pretty excessive to me.
Those same conditions are already recorded in the covenants, protective covenants.
Everything that was put into this PUD are part of recorded covenants, and the reason those were put in place is to maintain the integrity of the area, so we don't have area within the PUD that, you know, you've got cars all over, RVs all over, those sorts of issues.
Well, what happens when you're no longer around?
Well, the covenants are in place, and there'll be a homeowners association that hopefully will continue to maintain those, the integrity of the unit.
Okay.
So we're just in the interim until there's an Architectural Review Committee or homeowners association put in place.
And part of that was...
There's no homeowners association now?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, just a road district?
Correct.
Yeah, and part of that was also to maintain the integrity of not just the building areas, but also we are out in one of the forest areas, and we don't want certain types of homes being very contemporary homes brought in. We want something that's blending into the environment. That was part of why we did extensive covenants.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Don't go away.
Can we make comments on some of the other items that staff had made comments on or recommendations?
Sure. Okay.
On page 13, on the RV site, they made a comment on there that no funds would be transferred or paid to us. The intent of that lot, the RV lot, is for residents of the PUD and their families to be able to come and have them stay with them, but the lots are small, so they aren't going to have huge homes where there's going to be multiple rooms. So they do have a place to stay. We would require that they pay a fee for utilities and maintenance and upkeep, so there would be a fee paid. It would not be rented out, you know, to the general public. It is only for people, and that area is designed just for the use of the community. So that also kind of addresses that open, providing an amenity for the community.
Okay. Thank you, that helps.
Okay. Also, sorry. There was one other one. You addressed the setbacks, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The spa services, they had put in there, limited to massage only. Just so you know, at this time, we have licensed massage therapists come in and do their job. We have had many guests request that they, for facials, which would require a different type of license, where the state would come and do an additional inspection on the facility. We would like our therapists to be able to do that, so that clarification and change we would like addressed. Also, another condition was the number of employees. The number of employees it takes to run a, an event is grossly underrepresented. We've got, when we have an event for up to 150 people, it depends if you have served guests, or if it's a buffet type, your staff number fluctuates greatly. We've got dishwashers, we've got cooks, we've got all these people coming in to support making that event happen. So to limit us to five employees, we run over five employees just for an event. And then we have the bed and breakfast, which it takes more than that to run the bed and breakfast, and the grounds, which we have extensive grounds to maintain as well. We have also talked with several other businesses that have comparable events to ours, and they've, none of those have had that condition put on where there is a number of employees that you may hire and use for any particular event. So we would request that be removed.
Completely? That there be no limits whatsoever on the number?
On the number of employees?
Okay. Any other ones?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Sig.
I guess this is, you know, to me, a point of clarification is the PUD is basically a trade-off. You want certain things and certain things, and the county typically, or county city, gets more requirements, too. That may be a reason, I don't know, it's probably PJ should answer that question, but I mean, you know, setting limits, you were saying, me and not been done on other specialty resorts, that, were they under a PUD?
A conditional use permit.
Which we already have a conditional use permit, we're just asking that, you know, if it's going to stay a conditional use permit, there's kind of an awkward line here.
But you're requesting it not to go to, you're requesting it to be changed to a PUD?
Right.
Right.
And on the conditional use permit...
Well, that's what I'm saying, is with the PUD, that's the trade-off you have. You get more things, the county gets more things.
Right. On the conditional use permit, it said one employee, so we're trying to rectify that.
Okay.
And PJ, his mind thought five would be adequate, and we just received this on Friday also.
Friday, they also...
So we didn't have time to talk with PJ and explain our position, so that's why we're talking with you, that during the events, it can be 10, 15 people.
And quite honestly, I'm not disagreeing with you that run an event for five, with five people is pretty limiting, so.
Thank you. And maybe that'd be the trade-off, that we have a dialogue with PJ and come up with a more appropriate number for staffing. We wouldn't be opposed to that, but our concerns is that, you know...
Five is too small.
Yeah.
Five is way too small to run an event like this.
Well...
And to have the, it's two different types of things, and some of them are full-time, some of them are part-time. So if that's agreeable, something that we can look at.
Madam Chair, I guess I'd like to see some agreement reached on the number, but not necessarily removed.
And we would be agreeable to that.
Okay.
The other issue is we're asking for zero setback on lots 10, 11, and 12 only, and those are part of Summer Creek Inn LLC, and have already been approved for special events. That's where we, it's already under construction for the event site, for the tent site. And then in the staff report, it has verbiage of temporary structure, and we're wondering if there's any leeway on the verbiage of that. We anticipate having multiple events every month, even through the winter, because it would be one of the very few venues that can have winter weddings or Christmas parties.
So you'd like to leave the tent up permanently? Is that what I'm hearing?
If we could, yes.
Yeah.
Just for the wear and tear on the tents, taking them up and down, the furnishings within the tent, having to move them constantly, just to get it ready for an event can take upwards of two weeks, when you think about setting the tent up, getting the furnishings in it, getting the electrical lighting and everything, so.
Right. One of the other questions that we had actually for PJ, because it was kind of contradiction, you know, it's a temporary structure, but we have to have a building permit, which you don't have a building permit for temporary structure. So if we could get some clarification...
You do?
We do.
Okay.
We do now?
We have.
Okay.
$60.
For each event? Okay, I guess what I'm asking for clarification on is you want us to have a permit for each event, or each...
So the, we don't allow tents on structures for long periods of time, and though this will be, I've seen pictures of it, a higher quality tent, keeping it up over the winter, I wouldn't think would be appropriate. So allowing a tent there with temporary building permit, not an issue. The request was, and the recommendation is, to maybe build something more permanent in the future.
Funds are available, which we would like to do that. That's, that's one reason the structure that we applied for a building permit previously didn't happen, was because the construction costs came back and they were just astronomical, and we just decided not to do it. So maybe in the future, that might happen. And keeping in mind, if we can have this up permanently, there's going to be massive landscaping around, if you can see the landscaping that we've already done on the...
It's extensive.
Yeah, so it's going to be screened considerably from every, every direction.
So the zero footback, setbacks, zero foot, feet setbacks on 10, 11, and 12 is only on the interior lot lines, right?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Anything else before we...
I think so.
For one?
Do you want to keep this tent up all winter? Am I hearing that right?
Correct. We've got several holiday events. This year, we probably turned away, I would say, 30 holiday parties, just because...
So you heat this tent during the winter time?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just during the events.
Yeah, and putting it up and down during the winter is not recommended, because the canvas gets stiff.
Right, I can appreciate that.
Right.
Wow.
We also have additional plans for different events, like Tour de Chocolate has, for Hill City, which is a huge Hill City promotion that they're doing, Girlfriend's Weekend, all of those, we, they've wanted us to participate in those events, but we haven't been able to, because we didn't have the ability to keep this up throughout the year. We've got several different wine tasting events, quilting events. It's not like it's going to be hardcore rock and roll all year round. That's not what we're doing. As you can see from a lot of the photos, most of ours are family reunions, the weddings, a lot of 50th birthday parties, that sort of thing.
Madam Chair?
Yes. When was the tent constructed?
It's, we bought it last year, and we've set it up in the lower parking lot of the bed and breakfast. We've not had it erected in this spot yet, because it's been under construction.
Okay, so you've had, you've set it up once in the parking lot, and that's all so far?
Yes.
After, after you leveled the spot on 10, 11, 12, that's where you'd like to put it permanently?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then what do you anticipate is the life of that tent?
10 years, is the projected life. If you take it up and down?
Year-round?
Yes, if you take it up and down, it drops the life down to probably about three or four years.
Okay.
It's a $30,000 investment on our part, so we'd like to get the longevity out of it that we could.
And how big is the tent? What's our...
It's 40 by 85.
40 by 85, and is that the size of the pad that you're...
Yes.
That you'd like to pour?
It does snow up there, you know?
Correct, we do know that.
That's if you keep, keep heat in the tent, then it slides off, gets a pretty steep pitch on the roof, so. I think Black Hills Receptions has been in operation for multiple, numerous years. Their tents stay up year-round.
Yeah, that's true.
It's not been an issue, and these are a lot newer, a lot better constructed tents.
Yeah, actually, we've had several of the vendors comment how much heavier, and we use a crew that set up tents, and they couldn't, they were surprised at the quality of how much better the materials are than even the ones they own.
Okay, is there anything else? Any questions for the Evangelistos?
There was a lady back there.
Yeah, and I will get to the public here. I'm sure there are some people who'd like to comment. I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this issue?
Terry Vaughn, I live at the end of Taylor Ranch Road, so I'm not in the vicinity of their event center that they have gone on.
Of where, ma'am?
I do have a couple questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Terry, can you tell us where you live?
I live at the very end of Taylor Ranch Road, so you just have to follow it down, like three-quarters of a mile down.
You don't live in their development?
I do not live in that, no. I drive by it every day, but.
Gotcha.
I am wondering, where the tent is supposed to go, is that going to be constructed in the existing parking area that they now have that allows for all of these people that are coming?
10, 11, 12.
So, they want, they want to have event centers and vacation homes and all this, all these different buildings and people coming, and there's going to, and now they want to have a whole bunch of staff, maybe 20 people, each staff member's probably driving their own car. My concern is, I have several concerns, but one of them is parking, and if people start parking on Taylor Ranch Road, and that gets clobbered up with cars, I have a medically challenged child at my house who's on life support, and if that road gets clobbered up by cars because of all the events going on up here, I'm concerned about safety for him to get medical personnel into him if we need to. I also have a concern about water. I know that the neighbors that do live around that area have a water concern that they'll talk about, but my concern is, our well ran dry when this event, when this building was constructed, when this bed and breakfast went in, where they have a hot tub in all the rooms, they have the watering that they do for this beautiful landscaping, our well went dry. I can't say that, that it went dry because of this, but it was coincidental. Yeah, I mean, I am very upset that we had issues like that, that we had to deal with, clear at the end of our road. We talk about the beauty of everything, how pretty it is. One of the, when PJ talked about the access points to get in there, there's the one on Taylor Ranch Road, and then there's the one, the carbon loop drive or whatever that is, there's supposed to be a future access to that eventually, someday. When, when they're clearing off all this slate to make all these flat areas for the tents and the parking, whatever, there's, I got a picture for y'all, I'll just pass it around. That's the waste from leveling off all that, that they dumped into the state highway right away on Highway 385. Also, when you look down Summer Creek Drive, as it connects to Taylor Ranch Road, that's pretty steep, if you go back and look at their pictures on how steep it is. I would say where the runoff goes when there's rain, a lot of rain, like for last spring, there's probably, I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but probably more than a dump truck loaded with gravel that's come off his road, crossed Taylor Ranch Road into that field, and it's laid out there, and there's a creek down there, and that creek runs all the way down to our property. So there's been just some destruction out there, too. It's beautiful, where they've landscaped and everything, but we need to talk about the destruction that's happening around it because of all the building and all that. So you need to consider this other stuff, too, that hasn't been talked about, when you decide if you want to recommend all of that, so that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Is there anyone else who would like to, no, let's hear from everybody else first, please. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Donna Messer, this is my husband William Newcomb, we live on Taylor Ranch Road, the X on the far right. Many of these things have been touched on, but I'm not a public speaker, so I will read you my thoughts, or our thoughts. We would like to respectfully request that this application for rezoning change be denied at this time for the following reasons. The notice states they have, or they want to have vacation rentals, duplexes, churches, event centers, storage buildings, spas, cabanas, detached accessory structures, et cetera. That is all very broad spectrum, open-ended, and has the potential for a pitfall of unaddressed details with major loopholes. There are too many unknowns and questions about futures or features and specifications to the, to be comfortable in agreeing to any of this rezoning. Will the other Evangelisto family LLCs and the Gartners be in some sort of a partnership along with Dan and Nancy and their respective LLCs? Also, what will happen to our property values and our taxes? This is not a large area of landscape, or of land, yet has a high degree of topography. The landscape is forested with pines, steep inclines, and shale rock. There's, we are concerned about how you accommodate all of these, et cetera, potential buildings and housing. Duplexes, how large? Rental cabins, how large? How many gift shops, storage buildings, how large? Detached accessory structures with living quarters, how large? We need to know more details and not just their wish list. This blanket rezoning would be a premature decision by this county, as Summer Creek Inn has yet to comply fully with their conditional use permit. They were required to put in a defined number of designated and marked parking spaces with boundary markings. They have created parking, but they have not been marked or signed and don't have designated borders. This rezoning would even... This rezoning would even require even more parking to be established. With the proposed development, one has to assume that if you have a wedding event of a hundred and fifty guests, that each will have a vehicle, plus catering trucks, various trailers, and equipment. Our concern is that roadways would be impeded. This is an area with young families and small children, retirees, older families with grandchildren. It's vital for emergency services and first responders to have a constant and clear path in and out of the neighborhood. This is paramount. Currently, with events at the Summer Creek Inn, a clear roadway can be an issue depending on the size and the event they sponsor. We understand they wish to put in a church or chapel at first, and we know that's negative now. Their decision or their desired location would impede the views of the full-time residents, create new and different parking frustrations, and significantly reduce property values for those nearby. On top of this, there are major concerns about water, water supply, water usage, drainage routes, sewer, and septic. It's not just what is available for them to use, it's how it affects those already established users and those down the road as well, many of which may not even know about this request and meeting because they're out of the notification area. While the Summer Creek Inn is quite an impressive and attractive place, pleasing and well-maintained, we have come to know that the Evangelistos take advantage whenever possible and have a difficult time complying with the parameters of regulations or permits. They do construction and excavation without permits. They constructed fencing on our property without agreement. As recently as last year, they were exposed and caught allowing illegal camping when the county had previously denied a camping permit. They have a long-established history for disregarding permits and legal boundaries. You can't change a leopard's spots. By allowing this rezoning in these broad, open-ended terms, the county will have to have a built-in watchdog to assure compliance. It will be a full-time, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five job for an overseer to supervise that they have a clear and defined plan and implement by the proper terms. Given an inch, they will take a mile, find any loophole or irregularity to use to their advantage. Quite frankly, the neighborhood is tired of watching them get away with their blatant disregard for doing things the legal and the right way. And I do have one comment that on Lot 11, when you talk about interior boundaries, is that the boundary to the south, or is that...
No, it's just the boundary between 10 and 11 and between 11 and 12.
Okay.
Between 10 and 12.
So the boundary line north on 11 that is three or that touches 3, 4, and our X lot, will that have a zero-degree setback?
No.
What would, what is the, what's the legal setback?
I think it's fifteen.
I think it's fifteen.
Twenty-five.
Sure.
Fifteen feet.
So Lot 11?
Yes.
They're requesting fifteen feet from the front and the rear and ten from the sides.
So that line bordering us would be how many feet?
Ten?
Ten feet?
Minimum.
Minimum ten feet. Kind of in our backyard.
That puts it right at our door.
Very close.
You know, we moved out to this area about four years ago, and the countryside is beautiful. And that's one reason we moved there. And at the rate this is going, or attempting to go, we're going to wind up right back in the city, out in the country. I mean, we're going to lose all the beautiful trees and the wildlife and everything else out there. And to have the city in my backyard, I'm really not crazy about that. Yeah, I moved out there to enjoy everything around there. And luckily, our location allows us to enjoy the national forest on one borderline, but that's going to be about it if this development goes through.
Thank you. Are there questions for the Newcombs? I guess I have one. Have you had, do you have a private well?
We have a shared well with the Evangelistos.
Okay, thank you.
And we've run into situations where we've had water issues, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Peggy Bowser. I'm going to read my comments. I'm a member of B&amp;B Financial LLC, and we own the property, which is north, actually, on Taylor Ranch Road and 385, to the west of Summer Creek Inn. And I would respectfully request that you deny the requested rezoning due to the following concerns. First, I concur with the others who have objections. The neighborhood has seen the Evangelistos disregard their conditional use permit in many ways. Currently, they have received a large load of block and appear to be digging out the hillside in which to place a wall. Based on their past experience of following requirements and regulations, we question whether they will be installing the required engineered wall. Three years ago, the Evangelistos started a campground and the county closed them down. Last year, they again started operating a campground, advertising the same on their website, and they were again closed down. The petitioners have had issues with both the county and the Forest Service in regard to dumping spoils from their excavation on both Forest Service land, state highway and rights away, and on a resident's septic drain field. The matter of parking is still a major concern as the roads within the road district are narrow, steep, and shale rock. We feel that the matter of current parking and proposed parking be strongly considered as it is imperative that emergency vehicles be able to navigate the roads at any time if needed. The matter of water supply is also a very real concern. The well supplying our property, as well as two others, two or three others, is considered a residential well and may not be adequate to accommodate all the proposed uses. The primary well used by Summer Creek Inn currently supplies the inn and the residents to the east of the inn. After a hearing in peer and complying with the D E N R, that well is now considered a commercial well. Custer Trail subdivision is a lovely rural development in the Black Hills, and that is why we purchased our cabin. People who come to the Black Hills want the peace and serenity of the hills and to have relief from the city. It appears that the petitioners would like to establish a city in the subdivision. It has always been the hope of the neighborhood that Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, their LLCs, friends, and relatives who currently own various lots in Custer Trail subdivision would comply with the law in all respects as the rest of us do, and that they have consideration for the rest of the neighborhood. Thus far, that has not happened. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bowser. Are there any questions for her?
I guess I'm not clear where she, where you live. I'm just not clear where you live. Do you live across the highway?
No, that X at the north part, right by Taylor Ranch Road and 385.
Okay.
Kind of a triangular lot.
Just the one lot there?
Excuse me?
The one lot on the corner?
The one lot?
Correct.
Okay, and so you have a structure, you have a permanent structure on the one lot? Okay, thank you.
And you have a private well?
No.
Oh, you have a shared well?
Yes.
With the other two X lots, or with...
With, yes, the other two X lots, and then the lot below the number seven.
Okay, so there are four of you on that well? And have you, and have you, there are four of you on that well?
I believe, and plus the Evangelistos have access to that well. I don't think they use it, but they have access to it.
For their business? For the Summer Creek Inn? Business?
They supply our water. We have, they operate it under the, I think it's the Century Land Holdings LLC.
Okay.
And they, you know, the billing comes from them for the use of the water.
Oh, okay, right. I get it now.
Do you live there full-time?
We do not.
So you just use it as a vacation cabin kind of?
Yes.
Oh, you're not, oh, I thought you were permanent resident. It's a vacation.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Bowser?
It's not a vacation rental, it's just your vacation home.
No, it is a vacation rental.
Oh, a vacation home rental?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we heard your conditional use permit several years ago, I think.
You did.
I remember, yeah.
You did.
Okay.
Thank you.
That it? Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I got worked up, so I forgot to mention the campground use area. The Pennington County Commissioners denied their campground. They said, no, you cannot have, and that was after they built the campground. There's three or four pads there on the campground area with little septic tanks.
Which is Lot 7, right?
Yeah, and yeah, right, Lot 7. I believe that was in 2007 when they started building everything. And the county commissioner said, no, you cannot have a campground there, and they've been using that as a campground area, and they, it sounds like they will continue to use it as a campground area, even though the state's attorney just took them to court a few months ago for using it as a campground area. And they just stated they plan on continuing to do so, and I don't know if that's this development thing that they want to approve will allow them to then continue using it as a campground?
I think the distinction is that they will only allow people to stay there who are guests of the members of the PUD, not just the regular traveling public.
Right, and that was their intent then, was the overflow. And that's what they said, it's our overflow, and the county commissioner said, no, we're not approving their campground, when they have campground, so I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Would anyone else like to speak? No, we've got one more coming.
Morning.
My name's Don Behrens, I'm also at 12791 Taylor Ranch Road. I just, I can't get my mind around this, how you come into an area that primarily is a residential neighborhood and redevelop it all and just leave everybody else behind. You, you know, I'm speechless. It's, you want multifamily homes, you want vacation rentals, you want to put stores in, I mean, where do we draw the line on this? It's the destruction to the existing people's homes and values, there's no accountability for it. You know, the campground, they're going to continue to run that. You know, what's the difference whether people from the Bed and Breakfast stay there or it's the general public, it's still used the same way. You're still, you still have the same concerns. You know, it's not the first time we've been here, you folks know that. There's Bed and Breakfast down the road, Coyote Blues, there's Black Forest Inn across the way. How many complaints do you get about them? You know, we don't have any complaints, and they're not very far from us, but they kind of follow the rules. It's, I just hope you really can consider this, and I just think I'm opposed to it the whole way. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Behrens. Are there questions?
Excuse me.
Mr. Behrens?
Can you tell me what lot or lots you live on?
I'm at the corner of Taylor Ranch Road and the highway. It's the top X on the chart.
So you have a, you're a permanent resident?
I am not. It's a vacation rental. Peggy is my partner in that.
Okay, it's a vacation home rental on one lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, I forgot one thing.
Yes, Mr. Behrens?
I also don't understand how you're going to let them use a tent as a permanent structure. I have a real problem with that. Thank you.
I have to say the same as Mr. Behrens on that tent, as a permanent structure. It's right in our backyard, all of us. Whoever resident lives there sees it twenty-four-seven.
Thank you, Ms. Newcomb.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Evangelisto.
Let me try to go through the comments. Ms. Vaughn, I guess in regards to the running the campground, there has been three RV spots there for about nine years. Our camper has been stored there for probably seven years. In regards to us running the campground, as, that was the reason that the Assistant DA brought charges against us, was because they received numerous letters that we were running this full-time campground. That was not true.
There's never been a campground on there. It's...
It's never been run as a campground. The complaint said that we were renting them almost every night, all three spaces, all summer long, was the comments these letters sent to the Assistant DA. The fact of the matter is, last year, we had some guests, some friends of ours visit us from South Dakota, they spent a couple of months with us, they stayed at our Bed and Breakfast. There were maybe three nights that during Sturgis' time that we were full, and they slept in our camper on that site during Sturgis' rally, which everybody else is...
Actually, our state codified law, they allow it during rally. And it was cheaper for us to go in, pay the fine of sixty dollars, and plead no contest, rather than pay an attorney two hundred or two-hundred-and-twenty-five bucks an hour to fight this. So we went ahead and complied with that.
Okay, that being said, these same guests kept their luggage in that camper, so they maybe walked up there daily to get clothes or whatever, but they did not live, they did not use the bathrooms, they did not use the showers. So all these letters that the Assistant DA received were totally false. And like Nancy said, instead of fighting it, we just did no contest.
So there was only one camper?
Our personal camper is stored there.
Your personal camper.
Actually, during rally, there was two for a few days.
As far as...
The road runoff.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn had concerns about Taylor Ranch Road being blocked. We've had numerous events, and never has Taylor Ranch Road ever been blocked or Summer Creek Drive ever been parked on.
About the future of all the building...
Yeah, please.
I'm aware that she has a handicapped child. During the snowstorm of Atlas, she came down and asked me to take my equipment down and clear the road so they could get out and get some propane for the generator, which I did. So I'm aware that there's a handicapped child down there, and there's never been any parking issues. And the planning department, with their requirements for parking spaces, has been adequate, and we adhere to that. As far as the water runoff...
The gravel across the road that they're talking about, all of that gravel did come from Summer Creek Drive. However, that was prior to the road improvements that we've made. That road had been gravled and gravled and gravled, and because the drainage was not adequately handling the runoff, which the road district has now corrected that problem, and that does not happen any longer.
Yeah.
Especially last year when we had heavy rains, the new drainage.
I think there's numerous places around the county you probably could find where there was erosion issues because of the heavy runoff. And in addition to that, we've also, was a requirement of the planning department that we did an engineered surface water runoff study, and there's some more safeguards coming as far as check dams in the ditches and stuff to prevent surface water runoff. So those are coming, and it's a requirement in the PUD that we have those in place within two years as things get built out, so that addresses that. As far as people being concerned about this wish list, PJ told us to list things that might be built on these lots in the future. That's why we listed duplexes, B&amp;Bs. Maybe somebody wants to combine four or five lots and put a B&amp;B on it, or combine two lots and put a duplex on it. We're not saying we're going to put a duplex on every lot, we don't want that.
A prime example is Lot 13, smallest lot in there. There's no way that there's going to be anything buildable on that lot. Those two lots, possibly three lots, will have to be combined in order to put one structure on there, whether it's a duplex, a house, or a vacation home rental. Behrens, they operate their facility on our water, our well. Several of the people that are using the water are anywhere from six months to a year and a half where they have not paid for their monthly water use, so they've been getting free water off of our wells. So the concern of water is going to be a big issue if we continue to have that kind of abusive water systems. That's why we do have an engineered system put in place that will be implemented.
In regards to Ms. Vaughn's, oh, do you have a question?
Well, I just have one short question. In this development, how many permanent residents, how many of those lots are occupied by permanent residents who live there full-time?
Three.
Three?
Yes, sir.
And those are, that doesn't count you?
Correct. That's Lot 5, 8, and there's a family that owns, I think, 9 and 38 through 40. And there's a family that owns, I think, 9 and 38 through 40, I think, is the numbers, the left-hand side.
Okay.
And they are not on the water system, the ones on the left-hand side.
Did they have their own well?
Yes, and four, and the very bottom, he has his own private well.
They are located right next to the highway. I mean, they're not right next, but nearest highway, okay.
In regards to Ms. Vaughn's comments about the third access where I've been piling her, the shale is in her comments, that came up during the construction permits. I've got letters, I've got an approved approach permit from the county already. The material that is in place where that road is going to be constructed, I've got letters from the State Highway Department engineers saying that is excellent material for road base. Just to address that. But there is an approach permit in place and that third approach will be built within the next couple of years. The site distance to the south isn't adequate. And either we have the opportunity, we can go in and remove some material in the highway right away, or they're doing the widening project, I think, in the next couple of years. And the road district doesn't have the funds at this time. Do the work, so we're hoping that the Highway Department will do that and then we can finish the construction permit and finish that approach.
We actually have been in contact with the state and they are planning on taking out that blind spot and make, allowing that to have a better access. Until then, that road will not be open until that project with the state happens. And I think at this time, they're at 2018, that they're planning to do that.
In regards to Ms. Vaughn's comment about her well going dry, I think the time that we built the Bed and Breakfast was the tail end of an eight-year drought. So I don't think it was anything to do with our Bed and Breakfast construction that made her well go dry a half mile away. All of our wells have been...
State certified.
State certified and approved. And there's an engineered system in place for the, for the development as it builds out.
As far as the, some of the comments that have made about us not having any integrity or any desire to maintain the beauty of the area, we bought the property for the beauty of the area as well. And we are doing everything to maintain that, including, like Daniel said, a forest management program when we first bought the property to make sure that the existing trees are healthy and viable trees to continue on. The, some of the subjects' properties have pine beetle trees on that they're not addressing. So I, you know, we can sit here and go back and forth. But a lot of things that have been set up here have not been truthful as far as us not having, following the rules and the guidelines. If we have done something that hasn't been in compliance, we have immediately taken action. I've got letters from the state. I've worked with the state and talked to them about their communication with businesses and homeowners about what the requirements are. Because within their internal system, they weren't even talking to each other. So if you did something, you may be approved on one hand, but then they're requiring another thing that nobody knew about. So we have been in contact with them. And he said they had never seen anybody comply as quickly as we had, once we were notified.
In regards to Ms. Messer's comments, they're again listing multiple uses. It's not our intent. And PJ told us to list things that possible uses in the future. That was the reason for that. The gift shop, that's internal, inside the Bed and Breakfast. Whether it's T-shirts or cookbooks or...
Coffee mugs.
Yeah.
It's just something that we were told that if we had a gift shop area, it needed to be on this PUD.
In the conditions of our existing conditional use permit, I'm not aware of lines in the parking lot, gravel parking lot. I don't remember seeing that condition in there. But even if it was, I don't know how you'd stripe a gravel, gravel parking lot. We haven't had issues. We typically have one, if not two, staff members directing traffic during events, showing them where to park, so there's, there's not any issues with that. The B&B...
Excuse me?
Can I ask a question? Do you, does anyone ever park on Taylor Ranch Road?
Never.
It's always...
Maybe occasionally had a guest check in that wasn't quite sure where to park and they maybe have stopped there temporarily while they came to the door to ask a question. But never have we ever had anybody for events or overnight park in on Taylor Ranch Road.
Or park, or parking out on 385?
Never.
Not even on, on Summer Creek Drive. We don't even, that's even part of the...
Conditioner's permit?
The, pardon me?
The conditioner's permit?
No, it's part of our covenants that they aren't allowed to park on the main roads, that they have to have two off-street parking. That's why we made that part of the PUD.
I'd like it to be noted that the B&B and events were already approved and, and functioning when at least two of the complainants today bought their properties.
We had already been operating them.
And the event site was already under construction when two of them bought their property in the last couple of years.
Well, actually, the, we had been doing events prior to all of them buying their properties and had never had any complaints, had barbecues with all the neighbors that were there prior to them, got along with everybody fine. Since they have moved in, every time we have an event, they call the sheriff's department and file a complaint. The sheriffs are getting to the point where now we are concerned that if we truly have an emergency, they're not going to respond because somebody's crying wolf all the time. Every single complaint that they have called on has been not valid. It's part of city records. There has been no violations for our events.
In regards to the comment by Mr. Newcomb about the 10-foot setback between 11 and their lot on 5, I just wanted to noted that when that house was constructed, they asked for and received 10-foot setback variance between Lots 4 and 5. So their garage is backed up to our facility. We don't have an issue with that. But he's saying it's okay for him to do it, but not anybody else. Lot 11, that's behind their property that they're concerned about, is going to be a septic drain field. No structures are ever going to be built back in that little tiny strip. That's just a drain field back there. Just to let them know there's not going to be any buildings back there. Or let the board know that.
You have any other questions for us?
Anybody have questions? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any additional questions of staff? I guess I have one for Brittany. What are the soils like in this development? And assuming that these lots are individually developed, which is possible because they're planted individually, is there room for septic systems on all of them?
On all of them, I would say it would be a challenge. I hate to say no. It would definitely be challenging most of the profile hole information. I have not been out on a profile hole out there. Aaron and TJ have been the main people that have been out there. There is a lot of decomposed rock material in the profile holes that I have seen, the photos that I have seen, and then just from excavation and things of the area. The state does allow holding tanks and we do allow holding tanks in certain areas, especially on vacation areas. Some of these lots would probably have to have holding tanks just because of setback requirements and other things. The challenge will be setbacks to other people's, you know, properties and wells and things.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Brittany. Want to say something?
Okay.
Just status, kind of a status update on since the stormwater permits have been issued, have you been satisfied with what's been happening out there?
When I've been out there, there has been progress made. The last time that I was out there and met with Dan, he had the hillside, he had erosion blanket on the hillsides. He had taken down the stockpiles on Lot 27, was it 27? 27. So he was working on the project. And I did receive the drainage analysis plan from Britten Engineering. And they have some water quality capture volume requirements with some check dams.
So they are making progress on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I have a question on the parking for PJ. In condition number nine, you request a minimum of 34 parking spaces be provided on site. That doesn't seem like nearly enough to me for 150 people, even with overflow parking. And if 10, 11, and 12 are going to be the tent site, they will not be available for overflow parking, right?
Not the entire acreage of her 10, 11, and 12, just portions of it. And the county ordinance is one park, one per five, what is it here? Of 150 people, they required 30 park, 30 parking spots.
Really?
One to five. And there are, and then you add additional with employees. So that's where we come up into the 30s and they have space for 41.
Holy moly, that seems small to me.
That seems way too few.
Yes, Mrs. Evangelisto?
On the parking, we, the overflow parking is Lot 45. It's not 10, 11, 12. There's parking on Lot 3, Lot 10, 11, and overflow on 45. And then also on many of our events, we're doing an event tomorrow and they will be bringing a bus and bringing people out via bus. So it's not always like there's going to be 150 people or 75 cars. That's not how it works. Because we are out and if they're going to have alcohol, they generally bring a bus out.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am? Ms. Vaughn?
Just to clarify on the campground issue. The reason I mentioned that, I never wrote, I'm not, I didn't write any of the letters to the state's attorney. I was the one at the county commissioner that heard him say, "Don't use it." So that's, that's why I brought that up. I wasn't writing a letter because I don't see that from my house, that the campers are there, whatever. So now that I, I hear they want to have events throughout the winter, that's a very steep incline. And there have been cars that have been stuck on the road because they can't get up the hill because it's so slippery from, from the snow.
On Summer Creek Drive?
Absolutely. And, and we've, we've seen cars in ditches on both sides. And my son might need medical care in the winter. And Dan is right, they did come down. We, Storm Atlas came in, it was three days before we had it, we were dug out. And that was very scary. And very scary time for us. And, and I don't want to have to be concerned about now winter events that I didn't know they were planning on doing, where people can't get up that hill and now they're stuck in the ditch and then we need medical services and they can't get to us. So it's not just the summer and, and the, you know, the... You can't get up that hill unless you have really good tires and possibly four-wheel drive if there's a lot of snow. And if there's an event, maybe the event would get canceled and then the people won't come. I don't know. But that's something to consider. I just, I've, I've, I've driven down that road in the winter where I've had to stop because cars are sliding down the hill backwards. So it's a concern. And if you have 150 people coming and you know you're going to park at least 40 people, 40 different cars, that's a lot of cars that have a chance to come sliding down that hill. And, and then they're, "Well, I can't get up the hill, so I'll just park here." And then we've got them on Taylor Ranch Road. And there has not been an issue up until now. It's my concern is the future. It's, it's planning for winter events and all the construction that they want to do, that's my concern. I'm not saying there's a problem now. I'm foreseeing, I just want to head it off the past before we have a problem. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Is, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Newcomb.
I have one more tidbit to address on this campground. They said that the folks were storing their luggage there and they were just in and out to retrieve, things like that. Utilities were hooked up. Electric was hooked up. Lights are on at night. People are coming and going. And they actually published on their website that camping was available.
Okay, thank you. TJ?
Just wanted to know if you wanted me to go through all the photos that are on the PowerPoint. There's a considerable number of photos.
What's your wish, Commissioner?
Sure, I mean, show them, yeah.
Okay. Some I took and some the applicants have given. So this is the back patio. Also, some of the portions that they want to use is, they're already using it for people to have drinks and food and they just want to call it part of a bistro. So it's already existing. The spa. Just some of the awards they have by their front door or certificates, certificates that they've received. Again, the RVs, the storage area. I guess the patio. Back set up during an event. Where's the...
At this time, where we're doing them.
Okay.
That would now move up into the area where we're talking about for the tent.
Okay. Is that view looking down from the top? Is that the tent? One like it?
Actually, it's one similar to it. This is one that we rented from one of the local companies and ours is actually much nicer.
That's actually, where that wall is, is part of 10. So where that truck is parked is, no, that'd be 12.
That's where the tent will go?
That's 10, 11, and 12 is up that side, yep.
And those other ones with the RVs, you can see that there is an RV parked. Part of why we're, these lots are small and we acknowledge that. And we don't want what's right up there. You've got a house with an RV parked next to it. And if you put that throughout the whole development where everybody has an RV parked right next to their house, it's not going to look very nice. So we're saying three lots, not a campground, not an RV park. It's an area within the development that this is the only place in the development that you can have RVs. And for residents.
So residents will not be allowed to park their own personal RVs next to their houses?
Not outside. It allows them to have it in their, an enclosed garage, but not outside because it's, they're so small. If you click back to that other picture.
And only if you're in the PUD. This wouldn't apply to people outside of the PUD.
That's, that's the front yard. That's an RV that's parked in the front yard. Next one, back, nope, the other way. There was one that shows from our yard over.
I have to go and, I don't think I put them in the order you gave them.
Oh, you didn't put them. Well, actually, if you go back. So on the other side of the fence is our yard that we use where those ceremonies are our guests. And that RV sticks way above the fence and it's right in our backyard. So that's what we're trying to avoid, is those situations.
Benatir?
Yes.
Can I ask what lot that's on?
Lot 5.
That's on 5. So you're showing examples of what's outside of the PUD?
Right, but if we don't put some parameters on within the PUD and have an area for residents to have their RV and to, it's going to be everywhere in there, just like this. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
I have to ask, have you considered reconfiguring, replating all of these tiny lots into larger ones so that people can, in fact? I mean, I, every, virtually everybody I know has either an RV or a boat or something that they want to park next to their house. They don't want to have to build a garage to put it in, especially if the lot is as tiny as these are. I mean, have you even considered that option?
There, there has been some discussion about it and that's why some of these will probably have to be replatted individually. And there's some tax issues going on with that right now. So depending on what happens with that, as to which direction we'll go with that. We're applying for the PUD because in talking with PJ, that is the solution that we were offered. It's just like several of these things that we were in violation. We were told, "Do this and you're fine." And then a few years down the road, we're now in violation. So just like the shop that's sitting by itself. We were advised by the plans examiner at that time. That's how we were supposed to submit for it.
Right.
And now we're in violation. So we're, we're doing exactly what we're being told and advised by the Planning Department.
My, I guess my point, though, is that I would not purchase a lot in this, in this subdivision for that very reason if I, because everybody has toys.
Well, and again, my, my opinion would be I would purchase a lot here because I don't want a boat and an RV sitting out in front of my house.
Right.
So.
So everybody's, you know...
It depends on what you want.
Yeah, everybody's, you know, unfortunately... Yeah, everybody's, you know, unfortunately, you wouldn't buy with us, and she would. So, you know, our, our background is building, and we've done it for twenty-eight years in Washington State. Daniel and I were born in South Dakota. We were, had one of the best building reputations in the area of Washington. Everything that we have done here has been exceptional, good quality, and tried to be real good stewards of everything. Granted, it's in construction stage. There's areas that don't look pretty, we don't like looking at them. I don't like looking at them any more than anybody else. But end result is, we are not going to turn it into a little city. We moved out to be in the country, just like everybody else, and anyhow, that's all.
I guess, you know, you just said that out in the country, and, you know, I guess, I kind of agree with PJ in saying not leaving a tent up permanently, because like, to me, a forty-by-eighty-five white tent is not natural-looking. And you're concerned about RVs looking in a lot. I don't know how that fits into the natural look.
Well, it's offering a service to, this is also an extremely high tourism area, vacation area. We're also right centrally located in that. So we're offering a, a service for other people to enjoy it, not just us. They were talking about community use and those sorts of things. And in order to, it's a trade sometimes, and we are doing everything we can to soften it and have it landscaped and look as natural as possible. And we did originally apply for a building, and not only was it cost, it was exorbitant, tax rates and that sort of thing that have put that on hold. And when we eventually put a permanent structure, that's our goal.
Well, I'm sorry, but I, I agree, to me, there's a need. You're obviously supplying a need, if you're, you know, keeping that busy, and it's a beautiful facility. I didn't drive by it through this time, but last time you were on the agenda, I went by there.
Thank you.
And I think you have a beautiful facility, and there's obviously a need. But I find in the PUD requirements, you know, there's some things, our covenants that are restrictive on other people or future landowners, but yet you get a lot of leeway, and that's where I kind of struggle. The, the tent, you, you want leeway with a big tent, and I think you're right. With weddings and stuff like that, that's what you want. You want somewhere of a rainy event that you can go in, or, you know, just get out of the wind and all that. I mean, it makes a lot of sense, I, I think it does. But I think there needs to be a balance of what other, consideration for others, too.
Well, under the existing CUP, we're already approved to have the tent up when we have events.
Well, I'm not really arguing the tent, I'm just...
So I'm saying we're already approved, if we had an event every month, we're already approved to have it up every month, so...
And I'm not pushing to get, get rid of the tent, I'm just saying it's, to me, it's the economy with the fact you're saying trying to look a natural look.
Right, well, if you, if you're going to, if you could see the landscaping that we're going to put around it, it...
It will look natural.
The tent will probably look better than some of the houses that are already in there. Yeah, so I just want to make it clear that through the existing conditional use permit, we're authorized or able to have that tent up whenever we have events. We're just trying to get some clearer verbiage on leaving it up. Because we're going to have events every, every month. That's, that's just a given. So we just wanted to kind of clear up the verbiage.
Okay, thank you.
If we can do it or not, but...
Any other questions?
You know, this whole comment about the presence of the tent and so forth makes me wonder, who will buy these lots? Now, the people here, none of them would buy those lots because they don't want to be next door to your bed and breakfast and the big white tent. I'm wondering, do people who want to be out in the woods aren't going to buy your lot there because you're really not in the woods. It's becoming, it looks sort of like a suburban development. Now, I'm not saying there are people like that who want that, but it seems sort of odd because you've created a commercial center, and then you want people to come and buy lots that are supposed to be, you know, vacation-type homes. I, and I'm not, I'm not being critical of you, I'm just wondering who will want to do that?
Actually, I've got a list of people that want to buy lots already. If you would like, I can show you the list. We do have people, there's a lot of people that like rustic and don't want, they, they, they want an outhouse, they don't want running water, and that's great. That's not what we're offering. And, and there are a lot of people out there who want to feel like they're out in the woods and be able to walk and go on a hike, which you can do in our area, and, and still have some nice amenities, and that's what we're offering.
Well, it'll be interesting.
It's, it's not for everybody, but, you know what? I, I, I don't want to have a very rustic setting.
Yeah, you want to have amenities and conveniences close by, is what you're saying.
Sure, yeah.
Again, I want to state that the bulk of the covenants bought their properties after we had already had all these conditions approved and were under construction.
Yeah, we were already doing weddings and events.
Due diligence.
So they, it didn't bother them when they bought the property, but now it's an issue for them because there's been an ongoing struggle. It's, it's kind of a mob mentality that's happened out there, and it's unfortunate. We, we've spent a lot of money on, with attorneys trying to mitigate and, you know, come to common ground. And to date, that has not happened on a lot of issues.
Okay, we'll take one more comment, Mr. Behrens has one more thing to say.
I got to think a second here. They're, they're inaccurate in many things they say. When we purchased our property, there were no covenances, no city plan, like we're, we're talking about now, the bed and breakfast is there, don't have a problem with it, nice place. When we bought our place, shortly after that, I, several months, they put covenances on all the properties, including all the people who own their own property. I can give you the documents. We had to seek legal help to, to get them removed from our property. They put them on, on our properties, they don't even own that. How, how do you do that? I mean, is that the way you approach when you're going to do a development? You just snap your fingers and say, "Hey, you know, you're all going to build our way? You, you can't have a camper, you can't do anything?" Come on, man.
Okay, commission, we have a lot of conditions on this conditional use, or on this PUD. And I'm wondering, since it's almost noon, I'm wondering if we want to continue going through this? Are there things that people want to change, or should we sit on this for a couple of weeks?
I think we should continue this for a couple of weeks.
And I, I agree. Frankly, I came in here thinking that because there, there is just no way to digest all this in the limited amount of time we have. I would like to ask a question. Is it, is it a routine thing for applicants to write most of the conditions?
They did not write the conditions, they submitted...
Well, you said that, you stated that.
No, that was stated by somebody else. They submitted information that, from their covenants, that they would like to be put in the conditions. If you look at their nine-page document versus the conditions that were written, there are slight differences. I wrote the conditions.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. I assume that since they had written the covenants, that they were just transferred in. That's my error.
No, it's okay.
Well, I, I feel like it should be continued, too. It sounds like even the Evangelistos had some minor changes. I mean, it didn't sound major, but I mean, there's some minor adjustments, too. I, I think there is a lot to digest and a lot of good feedback today. I guess I would like to see it continued.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that PU sixteen oh three be continued to the next meeting, which is the twenty-seventh of June.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue planned unit development, PUD sixteen oh three, to the June twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting. Is there further discussion? Yes.
I don't know if this fits in the continue motion or not. I guess part of why I think it needs to be continued is, I think there are, this is a planned unit development, and like, it's not just me that's been saying that, several people have said, "Sounds like a wish list." And I think a planned unit development means that it's more of a definite plan. And I think that's the way it should come back, is in the continued document. My, my personal thoughts.
I, I would agree with that. I just don't like the wish list, it's too open-ended.
I do have to say, stepping aside from my role as chair, that I'm concerned mostly about water and sewer, that there's no provision for water and sewer in the, in the ongoing development. And I think that should be addressed as, as part of this PUD. Are there any other comments? Any else?
Let me just say, consistent with that, I drove up there yesterday. And the, the place sort of reminds me of what I imagine an Italian mountain village might be like. The terrain is very steep, and of course, the way the lots are configured now, they're very, very small. The road is very narrow, but I realize that's going to be widened, of course. But the reality of the water, and particularly the sewage situation, I just find hard to fathom. I, but we, hopefully, we will find answers to those issues by engineering plans and so forth. But it just strikes me on the face of it as being very, very difficult to provide good answers. So I'm not saying that can't be done, and it won't be done, but that makes me hesitate greatly.
Make your comment.
Sure.
On the water, there has been, when we bought the property, there is an easement for a well. We drilled a new well and had an engineered water system already designed and recorded with the state. So that addresses all the connections. So that's already been covered. So that helps issues with wells and septics on close proximities. There's a few homes in here already that are on individual lots that have onsite wastewater systems. When we bought the property, I did multiple test, test pits and had the planning department person come out and inspect those. And probably about ninety-five percent of the lots had adequate soils for onsite wastewater. It's our hope that, like we say, people will buy two, three, four lots, five lots, whatever the case may be, and that eliminates that issue of onsite wastewater issues greatly. And at that time, it's a recommendation of equalization that those combination of lots will be replatted. And so that's what we're going, that's what equalization and planning departments probably are going to require. So it's not our intent to build on every, each individual lot.
I can't imagine you could.
No, no. Like you said, lot thirteen is, might be part of a drain field someday, that's about it. But, and so the water's already been addressed, and, and we've already done test pits, and the soils have been quite well, considering what the topography looks like. And it's our intention that people buy multiple lots, and maybe one lot might be nothing more than a septic drain field, so...
Okay, we are...
Madam Chair, can I ask just one quick question?
Yes.
While you're still up there?
Yes.
I don't see it in the, in the report, but I think you stated it. When did you purchase the property?
Oh, five, I believe, some of them.
Two thousand and five. And didn't, didn't you say something about how it had, it had been platted as a development, and then nothing had been done for some period of time?
There were, majority of these lots were all considered developmental lots, where the interior property lines would vacate if, if you, you could build across them without any additional applications or, or anything. The Department of Equalization this past year has taken upon themselves to divide all these lots up into separate, separate lot ID numbers.
Yeah, yeah, but didn't, didn't I hear you say something about the sixties?
It was since nineteen, I think I was telling you nineteen seventy, if lots were sold in groups since nineteen seventy-something, I was saying, but I think it was, I correct, Stan corrected, it was if lots were sold in groups since nineteen ninety-four, I think.
Nineteen ninety-four, okay.
They were considered developmental lots, and, and we're looking into why equalization has split these all apart, tax purposes and for this developmental status they've taken away now, which...
But, but I thought you said something about when you did the, when you did the forest, the, you know, remove the dead trees and stuff? I thought you said something about how it had been sitting there for some period of time, where really nothing had been done.
It was, it was planted in nineteen sixty-one, and it has basically set as forested trees since nineteen sixty-one. There were only a couple houses along Taylor Ranch Road. When we bought the property, about the same time we bought the property in oh five, Mr. Briggs built a house on the four lots at the very bottom, the black X's. And, and the four X's to the far left-hand side was, was built about that same time. So it was basically all just vacant hills with woods, the roads were not improved at all, so...
But this was platted in nineteen sixty-one as developmental lots.
Okay.
And the intent was to have vacation homes on all of those lots. And that's when we went in and asked originally for conditional use. We've been in so many times, I can't remember exactly. But one of the things that we were originally going to do was put vacation homes on there. And we were denied because at that time, they were going through the transition of vacation homes where you had to make it highway services, and we were not rezoning to highway services, it wasn't allowed. So that's what all of that was in the beginning.
I just didn't see that anywhere in the documentation, and I wanted to make sure I understood that history.
Okay, we have, do have a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
To continue PUD sixteen oh three to the next Planning Commission meeting. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. On to item...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
The Board of Commissioners will hear the Planning Commission's recommendations from the May twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen Planning Commission meeting at their meeting on Friday, June tenth, two thousand and sixteen. So that'll come next meeting, the result.
No, you can go over those now, because that was...
Yeah, would you tell us where?
I know. I don't think there's, yeah, it's kind of went through, everything was approved, basically, nothing was changed.
Hartshorn's second reading.
Yeah, Hartshorn got approved.
Wyoming Dakota Railroad Properties.
See if you can bring it up.
The Don Brassfield layout plat. Darlene Hutchinson layout plat. The continuation of the vacation home, the ordinance amendment. The Jensen rezone, first reading. Everything was approved.
Yay, we made it through one without getting overturned, that's good. Okay, item twenty-five, items from the public?
Joyce Shigru, it's late and you haven't had a break. As an observer, this is sort of philosophical, but I think it relates to what's happening in other areas like the VHR. And it's, it's very important to me that thought be put into this. What I see is commercial development versus residential neighborhoods. And I know this is not going to go away. The push from commercial into residential is going to be greater in the future than I see now. So what is the philosophy of this county? Commercial development, financial gain versus preserving residential neighborhoods? Now, I also heard, so that's my first thought. People buy, in our location, out in the hills, for peace and tranquility, a setting of peace and tranquility, and I've heard this from many people. And I'm not talking about those who buy into an area that's already commercially developed, and they know what they're buying into, then they come in and want it changed. You know, if there's a racetrack or a, or a gun, gun, gun-shooting range or whatever. But those of us who bought and actually checked the zoning ordinances and looked at the area, the size of the lots, and we bought because we believed we were in a residential neighborhood. And then it changes. And we are, it's very, very difficult to speak against that. You know, we're not, none of us are against commercial development, but we don't want it where we bought for peace and tranquility in a neighborhood. So that's another thought. Then the other that keeps rising, and I don't want to imply anything for the folks that were here today, but with, with you folks and with the VHR committee, I think we're grappling also with not just commercial operators, which we have for VHR, but... grappling also with not just commercial operators, which we have for VHR, but operators with isolated one residents, but they're not good operators. And versus the majority who you never hear a complaint from. So how do we help the folks to, in a residential neighborhood who have a bad operator? And I don't know if it's really, as a county, our responsibility to do that, but we've set this up, okay? We have allowed that to happen, and then we have a bad operator, and then the neighbors have to be the policemen. And I'm, I'm really grappling with this as we're looking at the ordinance changes in VHR, because we have a clause in there that says we don't want to put people in harm's way, to be the enforcers, yet we have VHRs who are by complaint only. And that automatically puts those neighbors in harm's way. And how do we grapple with this? Is the comprehensive plan the answer to this for the future? You know, I know it's always sloppy and not easy, but we're making decisions that set the county up for trouble. You are going to hear repeatedly, it's hard to get at the facts, and I understand this. I keep pushing, too. When did this happen? You know, that kind of thing. Because we're desperate. So we come in, and we want you to help us, and I don't know if you can, but you've set us up for these problems. And I'm not saying you specifically. I'm saying the county, in their decision-making process, has set this up. So these are just some philosophical things. As I listen over and over, I hear the same kinds of things come up, and it's certainly something that this vacation home group is grappling with. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Items from staff? Items from the membership? Anybody got anything?
I know, it's long. Actually, I was going to bring up some of the points that Joyce just did, too. Kind of plug for the comprehensive plan, and we went to the County Board and asked for some direction, because I think there is a lot of truth that people go to the hills for peace and quiet, and then all of a sudden, and again, I think that there's a call for a need for a facility like the Evangelistos are doing. It's a beautiful facility. So how do you balance that? And I think we do need direction through a comp plan and from the County Board.
Barb, I, I have something, too. In so many cases, this is a particular case. We need to have these booklets a week ahead of time. This, this idea of sending them out on Friday afternoon and, and the quickest any of us can get through them Friday evening, and then spend our weekend going over them, a lot of times, you know, we have, we have lives of our own. And on this one, I would really have appreciated getting it a week ahead. I, I think that there needs to be a change in scheduling, you know, that could be put into place, so, so the week before we have the meeting, we get these booklets.
I agree with Barb, especially on, on large projects like this one. It was just way too much information. I mean, I read every word, and I made a lot of notes, and.
You can't absorb it.
And I caught more stuff from you guys than I, than I did when I did my original read-through.
Right.
So there's, you know, it's a, it's a big honker.
Madam Chair, can I make one comment?
Yes.
I guess my comment would be is that I think we have to take into consideration, I, I find it very hard to believe that people say they have a peaceful, quiet place that's along a major highway. I think properties that are located along highways should be treated a little differently than ones that truly are isolated in the peace, peaceful and quietness of the woods. I, I hear so many contradictory things. It's like, we purchased our property on 385 because of the peace and quiet. It's like, come on. The highway was there, and so now you're telling me that the highway and tourist traffic that existed didn't bother you, but now a wedding does? I, I find that very hard to believe.
I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I noticed that some of the houses that would not be involved in this were right along 385. And I thought, well, there's probably a reason for that. You know, in the old days, it was, you were close to the main road, so you didn't get snowed in. But it's not like they bought something five miles down that Taylor Road, and, and of course, if the Evangelistos had put their place five miles down the road, their success would be less dramatic, I think. So there's a reason, and, and I, sometimes people's perception of, of this peace and quiet and this solitude, I think, is terribly flawed. And you hate to have to say that, because, but there's a reality to it. I live on Nemo Road. I live right next to the creek, and I think, this is perfect, bucolic, you know, couldn't be any better. And then I think, but there is a road there, and there's a reason that I built the house near the road. Well, I guess my comment is just in more towards the vacation home rentals, and agreeing with Joyce on that part. I, I agree, when you're close to a highway, I mean, it's a different animal than five miles in, but we do have big subdivisions. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's true. Oh, yeah. I was thinking more about this, but yeah, you're, you're right about that, yeah.
And yet, what we're really looking at is expansion of commercial and residential side by side. The people who spoke, they knew what was there when they purchased the property, but now we're looking at major expansion, and we've had this come up again and again. So it is a, a war of sorts between I want my home to be residential and commercial expansion.
Right. Exactly. I have one question for staff. In the vacation home rental discussion that we had at our last meeting, there were several references made to a guy up in Alpine Meadows who was a bad operator. Has anybody lodged a complaint?
No. His review's actually up in the next few months.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
There is.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Should we just keep?
My, my name is Dennis Hubbard. I was item 13, and I don't know if I came in late.
Well, that was the consent calendar.
Pardon?
That was on the consent calendar, right? 13?
Yeah.
Yes. You got approved away at the beginning.
Yeah.
Oh, we must have came in, I think, we were here right at nine, I thought, and there must have been a motion to deny, or?
No, it was part of the consent calendar, and we, when we approved the consent calendar, we approved the approval of your conditional use permit.
Oh, okay. I just had a couple of questions on the conditions that I would have liked to have addressed if I had a chance. There was 10 conditions.
I think, yeah, we need to have a motion to rehear this item. Would anybody like to make that motion, since Mr. Hubbard is here today?
So moved.
Do we have to first move to remove it from the consent calendar, even?
Maybe.
Oh, okay.
To reconsider it?
Withdrawn?
I don't know.
And the staff member that wrote this is not here, but we'll do our best.
Okay.
And not in the building, so.
Maybe we need to remove it from the consent calendar first. So move that.
Would reconsider the, the consent calendar agenda and remove item 13?
Somebody second that, please?
You're all second.
Perhaps a gentleman could tell us which ones are bothering him, and maybe it could be just resolved.
I think we do. Unless. To discuss it. Okay. We have a motion on the floor to remove item 13 from the consent calendar.
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we need a motion to reconsider item 13.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to reconsider item 13. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Mr. Hubbard, what are your issues?
Well, first was item five, being that this is a temporary dwelling that we are wanting to put on the property that has to be removed upon my demise or upon my not needing it anymore. I don't understand why I have to invest a considerable amount of money in siding it and putting a peaked roof on it and stuff for a temporary dwelling. This is going to be a fairly new trailer, purchased most likely from a dealer, that this trailer has been refurbished. And to go farther by putting all wood siding on and a wood peaked roof and stuff, I think, is incurring a lot of an expense and making a temporary trailer a, more of a permanent structure.
The reason that that condition was included is that it's part of our zoning ordinance. Section 304 Mobile Homes state that mobile homes must have factory-installed wood, hardboard, or siding with a wood appearance, and must have a factory-installed peaked, non-reflective roof. Now, you can ask for a variance from that, and I don't know what, what, what the procedure is for that.
Variance processed through the board.
Yeah. You would have to apply for a variance.
I see. I see. And also, condition number eight. I bought this property in September of 2015, and now that I applied for this conditional use permit, it has come to the county's attention that there was two outbuildings that were built in 2003 without building permits.
Right.
They tell me I am liable for the building permits, which I concede. Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and get the building permits, but they also tell me I am also liable for any penalties that may be incurred by these people that did not obtain the building permits 13 years ago. And that's kind of akin to saying your uncle's mother's cousin's brother ran a stop sign 13 years ago, and we can't find him, so we're going to find you. And I, I just don't see the.
The logic therein.
Yeah. But I'm told I've got to go to the board for a variance on this, too.
Yep.
Well, not on a variance. They would just waive the penalty fees.
Just for a waiver.
And I think they will. They typically are pretty reasonable about stuff like that.
We can't vary from the ordinance. They can.
Okay.
So that's why it has to be in there.
Okay. So how do I go about doing this?
You can talk to the afterwards.
Yep.
Okay.
Talk with PJ and.
That's all I've got, then.
Okay.
Just those two conditions.
All right.
I take your time.
Oh, thank you.
Same time in the room.
We have to continue.
Yes. We need, do we need to continue this issue, then, or shall we?
Questions about the conditions?
Yeah, whatever.
This would be, usually you don't. If it's, it's a condition that usually gets handled outside through the board, especially on number eight. And if he wants to do a variance for the other one, it's going to, I mean, it's part of the ordinance. It's got to be in there.
The new thing.
He has to do the variance. It's basically all board material now.
Okay. All right. So we can.
Can it stand approved?
I don't know how it would work after you pre-pulled it out.
We pulled it out, so we have to vote on it.
Vote on it again?
To vote, yeah.
Treat it like a fresh motion?
Unless you want to. You guys just did to reconsider the.
We had a motion to reconsider, so I think we have to have another motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit CU 1613 with 10 conditions as written by staff. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
Thank you.